One nation, one tribe, invisible liberty and justice for all.
Hey, Madam Clerk, do we have your roll call, please?
Jamie Girardi.
Here.
Christopher Poole.
Here.
John Moody.
Here.
Matthew Muntz.
Here.
Derek Montlich.
Here.
Chris Williams.
Here.
Chair and Charles Craig.
Here.
And please their proof of publication, please.
The items for advertising can be placed on August 21st, 2024, October 23rd, 2024, November 27th, 2024, and December 25th, 2024, and by applicable certified guidelines in the state or states.
All right. Thank you. And do we have approval of minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes from October 17th to November 21st.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Okay, motion carries. So I'd like to welcome everyone today and to the Planning Commission meeting. And at this time, I'd like to have anybody that plans to get up and give testimony to please stand and raise your right hand and be sworn.
Do you swear or present testimony you have to give? Is it true as well, God?
Thank you. So we're the Planning Commission, and we're appointed by the Board of County Commissioners, and we meet twice a month. We serve as a local planning agency, and we hold public hearings and transmit to the Board of County Commissioners our recommendations on comprehensive plan amendments, land development code amendments, rezonings, and conditional use requests. The Planning Commission is the final decision-making body for special exceptions, certain appeals, variance requests, and certain alternative standard requests. However, final decisions may be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. Anyone in opposition to any comprehensive plan amendment, land development code amendment, rezoning, conditional use, or any item where the Planning Commission make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, it would be important for you to attend the appropriate County Commission meeting. Those of you who are not familiar with the format of the meetings, we have three sections: continuances, consent items, and regular items. Continuances are items that where the staff or the applicant has requested a continuance for any number of reasons, and unless they're unusual circumstances, it's our custom to grant those requests for continuances. We have consent items. Those items are items where we've not received any objections from staff or the public, and those items are on consent agenda. We'll go through the consent agenda items one at a time. If there's anything we, on that consent agenda that you would like to have heard today, please raise your hand when we read the continuance number, and we'll be happy to pull it for discussion. Anything that's pulled will go on to the regular items, and those are items that will be fully discussed today and where maybe many of you will be speaking on. So we have, I think, one request for additional time. It's typical for us to have the applicants have five minutes, and questioners or respondents to have three minutes to ask their questions, then the applicant will have an opportunity to come up and respond to those questions. So I think we had, as I said, I think we have one request for extra time, right?
That's correct.
And... This is, I better check myself. Maybe the time when I would suggest that you check your phones or any items you have on you that may provide a sound during the meeting, please silence your phones so that we don't disturb anybody that's speaking. Before we start the regular meeting, do we have anyone here that's here to comment on or ask questions on anything that's not on today's agenda?
Mr. Chair, we do have one individual signed up, Nancy Hazelwood.
Okay. So before we start the regular meeting, Ms. Hazelwood, would you like to come up and speak?
Nancy Hazelwood, 34110, a nice place. Appreciate you all taking your time to be here and look at applications that are coming in and listening to our woes, and I've got plenty of them right now. First off, I'd like to speak on the Northeast Rural Area Plan. I want to give you in a nutshell to remind you that it was created at the same time as Pasadena Hills, and we were told it was in trade. Let Pasadena have all that density, and we could stay the rural protected area. But the county seems that it's letting applications in there, not sustainable to the northeast protected area right now. Coming before you sooner or later is Evans 80 and an AC. Let me remind you, an AC originally was created for good solid jobs such as medical. Evans 80 makes that amopery. It is high density. How are we protected? It's right in the middle of northeast rural. Blanton Road project, nineteen point something or other acres. They're asking for ten units on it, which should be okay, but they want Res. 1. All of a sudden, you've got Res. 1 in the middle of the northeast rural area, and that is a suburban density, not rural, not protecting our area. So this is, it's next to, it's close to a subdivision that was built in the 60s or the 70s, like a HUD project, and they're using that. That was grandfathered in. I consider those people really lucky to live in the Northeast Rural Area Plan because we have not much in the way of problems out there, or traffic, or anything else, but they're going to use it as a way to jump off. I don't think that's because of that HUD project is not a reason to start destroying the protected area. Better yet, let's find a way that we can get out of that. Since it's Res. 3, there's got to be Res. 1. They're just saying that there's no other land use that they can use, but there's got to be something there. We do not need Res. 1 in the middle of northeast rural. Or maybe this is the idea all along, to break open the Northeast Rural Area Plan. But wait, there's more. A test well is supposedly for water for the growth in Pasco County is approved, is trying to be approved to test water out in the northeast rural area. The question is, why is it almost on the Hernando County line and close to the Green Swamp if it's to supply water for the other side of the county that's growing? Let's return to Evans 80. They have a condition on that plan that says they can't begin until they have county water and sooner. So, well, guess what? Utilities is thinking about putting a wastewater treatment plant in the same area. Do you want to hear more, or you want me to go?
Yeah, one more minute.
Okay. So if the well fills for all of Pasco, one would think it'd be put closer to the growth instead of having water lines all the way out to the other side of the county? There is no doubt in my mind that this county is using these projects to open up and get rid of the northeast protected area. Is it any wonder that people mistrust the county? What is the county giving back from this for this? Crime, congestion? What about our drinking water? Since the protected area was in exchange for Pasadena Hills, how about taking something from Pasadena Hills and giving it back? This is the taking. The county needs to start honoring its agreements. It's not happening just here. It seems to be happening all over the place. Y'all just voted on getting, not saving a rural area last time you were here. The county, one more thing, the county's 2050 Plan Meeting, the number one item that people all wanted to save were rural areas and add to them. So what do we do? We're getting rid of them more than ever. Did the county hear us? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hazelwood. Okay. Liam? Excuse me, sir, did you want, did you have something? I'm sorry?
Yes, sir, outside of the Republican House.
Oh, okay.
Michael Pultorek, 9152 Kenton Road, Wesley Chapel. Florida, 33545. First, I wanted to just thank you guys for what you do. You're not paid near enough, and more times than not, you're the bad guys. We really do appreciate what you guys do in your service to the county. The other thing I wanted to mention was in December, I reached out to each Commissioner and also Director Engel, and I lead the Pasco Connected Cities Residence Group. We have over 1,100 members, and we have a lot of concerns about the connected city. I reached out to bring some of our concerns about the connected city development and rezoning to their attention, and I want to thank Chairwoman Starkey, who sat down with us on Monday, and Director Engel, who has also sat down with us to listen to our concerns. We very much appreciate them. Some of the concerns that we've wanted to bring forward is in the connected city. The majority of the recreational areas and parks and all of the nature trails did not get built. They are not in the rezoning. They did not get past engineering. A big portion of the connected city intent is parks, open areas, green spaces, and outdoor trails, a healthier lifestyle. Those are a big portion of our concerns, and they sat down and listened to us. Commissioner Yeager, I'm scheduled to meet with her tomorrow, so a thank you in advance. We both had to reschedule, and just want to thank Director Engel and Chairwoman Starkey for taking their time to meet with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Good afternoon, Liam Devine, Planning Development and Economic Growth Department. Item PC 3, which I do have some corrections to read into record. Your agenda package states it's PDE 25-0434. That should actually read PDE 25-0082. Additionally, the subject line of that agenda item should read as Development Agreement, Hamilton Oaks MPUD Master Plan Unit Development, AMH Development LLC, and this will be coming with a request to continue the item to the January 23rd meeting for Planning Commission at 1:30 in Newport Ritchie.
Okay. All right. Let's go to the next one.
Okay.
Is the applicant present, by the way? Anybody here to object? Next.
PC 4, PDE 25-7738, and it is a zoning amendment in the names of, in the name of Evans County Line 80 MPUD Master Plan Unit Development, Evans Property, Inc. This is coming with a request to continue the item to the Planning Commission meeting on February 6 at 1:30 in Dade City.
All right. The applicant present?
I would like to note, we do have somebody who signed up for public comment on that one, James Navarro, but this is a continuance item.
Okay. Is Mr. Navarro here?
I have a general comment regarding...
Excuse me, just a minute, Mr. Navarro. If you're going to speak, we just need you to come up to the, because we have to have it on record.
That's fine.
So we need your, we need your name and address, but let me just say this before you do speak. If this is going to be continued, it'll come up at a different date, so it won't, it won't be heard for consideration today, so if you want to hold your comments until it does come up, that's your option, but if you speak today, you won't be able to speak at the next meeting.
All right. My name is James Navarro. I live at 34721 Blanton Road, Dade City. My comments, I selected PC 4, or it could be any one of these items on the agenda. It's pretty general. My consideration, or my concerns here is that this committee has, in my opinion, since I've been here over 35 years, has opened, it's like the Wild Wall West when it comes to approving agricultural land for high-density residential. I live right next door, and there's another, this young lady here was stating that they're going to break up the land for 10, 10 units, possibly more. So my concern is general. I'd like to be able to say that we all like to enjoy agricultural lands and enjoy animals and chickens, and I have those, but since I've been here, it's been constant road traffics coming through. I live right on Blanton, and hopefully with this new members, or some of you guys are new, can do something about the constant traffic flow and breakup of the lands that we appreciate. You guys started with the Tampa Electric, with the zone, I mean, the solar panels across the street from the college. You have these multi-unit. Right next door to me, we're going to have another split of 10, and now we've got this 300 unit plus another one on 34 acres. What's going on? Why, why do you guys insist on agreeing to doing that when you know this area is mostly for agriculture, for people to enjoy a different lifestyle? That's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Yes.
I think if it's okay with the Planning Commission, you should construe those comments as just being general public comment.
Okay.
Because I don't, it doesn't feel like he was really speaking to PC 4.
Right.
I don't want him to be prohibited from speaking on PC 4.
Got you.
And I also don't want to have to give the applicant rebuttal because the comments were of general nature, so I don't, I think you should just construe it as being general public comment.
Okay, so for the record then, Mr. Evans, for the record then, it means, what it means is when it does come up for, to be heard, you can come up and speak again. Okay? Thank you, David.
The next item on the list is PC 5, PDE 25-7845. It's a special exception request in the name of BDI Properties US LLC TLE Wells Road. This is coming with a request to continue the item to Planning Commission on February 6 in Dade City at 1:30. I would also note this item will be re-advertised in the newspaper.
Okay. Is the applicant present? Okay. Anyone sign up to speak on this one? No.
No one signed up to speak on this one.
All right. Is that the last continuance?
That is the last continuance, but PC 6 will also be a staff request of continuance if you would like me to read that into record.
Okay.
So PC 6, PDE 25-7848. It's a special exception request in the name of 52 Properties LLC Tropical Boat and RV Storage 52. This is coming with a request to continue the item to the February 6 meeting in Dade City at 1:30 PM for Planning Commission. This item will also be re-advertised in the newspaper.
All right, thank you. Is the applicant present?
Mr. Chair, since this one was not advertised as a continuance, you should see if there's anybody here that wants to speak to it. They can't make the next meeting.
Is the applicant present? Okay, is there anyone here to, here to speak on this one? Okay. All right, those are the continuances, then?
That would be your last continuance item.
So we have some requests for continuances. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve the continuances?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Just to clarify, clarifying the motion, that's the date stated.
The date stated, yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Opposed, like sign? Motion carries. Okay. There we go.
PC 7, PDE 25-CU07. It's a conditional use amendment request in the name of DV Dade LLC Discovery Mood and Anxiety. It's a conditional use amendment to increase the number of beds from 24 to 40 in an existing residential treatment care facility in a AR1 agricultural residential district. It's located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Clinton Avenue and Windsor Wood Boulevard. This is coming with a request to approve with conditions.
All right. The applicant present? Okay, didn't see you back there. Okay, is anyone here to object? Okay. Is that the only, only consent item?
That is your only consent item.
Mr. Chair, move to approve the consent agenda. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Okay.
Mr. Chair, P. 8 will be presented by my colleague Gavin Kobe.
Okay.
Good afternoon. Gavin Kobe, Planning Development and Economic Growth. Before we get started, I do want to say that we do have an additional exhibit that we would like to include for the record.
Okay.
And we also, I should say, we also have printed copies for anyone that may want that exhibit. Who is?
Gavin, is that the surrounding MPUD exhibit?
Correct, that is the surrounding MPUD exhibit. While we finish up, I am going to get started. So this is PDE 257615, the Tall Timbers MPUD. And so this is a rezoning request from AC Agricultural District to a CC Connected City Master Plan Unit Development, and this is for 380 multifamily dwelling units and 180,000 square feet of non-residential uses and associated infrastructure on approximately 38 acres. And this is located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Kenton Road and Tyndall Road. Here is a location map within the entire county. Here is a location map within connected city. As you can see, it's within the community hub, adjacent to the urban core. As you can see here, we do have the SPA development patterns for the community hub up here. It's a little hard to read, but I'll read some of the, the standards within the community hub. It is medium density and intensity, recreation, cultural, and educational uses, civic, multifamily, and single-family residential. There's prohibited industrial uses, and the housing options also include single-family detached courtyard houses and row houses. Here's a location map for the MPUD. Here's a zoning map, which is currently AC. And then here is a context map for you. So we have the subject site in blue, the Marada MPUD to the north, the Kenton MPUD to the south, and then to the west, I'm sorry, Pasco County's facilities. And really quickly, just to recap on the entitlements in this area, first, we have Marada, which was approved for 285 single-family detached dwelling units, 1,500 single-family detached, age-restricted units, 991 multifamily dwelling units, 2,161 single-family, attached 421,000 square feet of retail, 186,000 square feet of office, 50,600 square feet of medical office, 50,600 of university hospital, and 200 hotel rooms. To the south, the Kenton MPUD was approved for 800 multifamily dwelling units and 106,286 square feet of non-residential. And then, you can't see this on the exhibit, but the Pasco Town Center was approved for, to the west of the Pasco County facilities, was approved for 3,500 single-family attached and multifamily dwelling units, 400,000 square feet of retail, 725,000 square feet of office, and 4 million square feet of industrial, and 300 hotel rooms. Here is a picture of the master plan, which includes the SRSA site and the mixed-use area. And then here is the binding concept plan, which includes the mixed-use buildings, the office buildings, and where the townhomes will be located. Additionally, there are 41 required units to be rear-loaded within the townhome section, and there are requirements for vertically integrated apartments with non-residential, a minimum of 12,000 square feet. There was additional language between the last PC hearing that the PDE worked on and included in this one with the applicant, and we thought that ensuring that the masquerading and infrastructure plans for the SRSA site be included with the residential to ensure that any wetland or floodplain mitigations would be put on the residential side, and making sure that plans are submitted for the entire site so that the non-residential could come in the future. And this comes as a recommendation of approval with conditions to the Board of County Commissioners.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
Gavin, can you put the binding concept plan back up?
Yes, of course.
So, this comment will not be a shock to you because I've raised it in other MPUDs. The binding concept plan is showing neighborhood parks, and Condition 9 says the neighborhood parks depicted on the master plan have not been reviewed for approved consistency with the land development code. That seems like a problem to me. If we're saying that that plan is binding, but then we're also saying that we don't know if they comply with, comply with the land development code or not. So, now, I understand your position is that this binding concept plan doesn't deal with all the aspects of the neighborhood park, but clearly it's showing neighborhood park locations and acreages that if we're saying that's binding, I don't know how we can say it's binding, but then we can change it all at site plan. So there's got to be a middle ground between saying a concept plan is binding and saying that we're deferring neighborhood park review to the site plan approval. So to me, Condition 9 needs to say something like, except for the neighborhood park attributes that are depicted on the binding concept plan, then, then that review will occur at site plan approval, but you can't ignore the fact that there are neighborhood parks depicted on this binding concept plan, which Condition 9 appears to do. So in my opinion, 9 needs to be changed to create some exception for the park attributes that are shown on the binding concept plan.
Absolutely, and I believe we're working through this exact problem through other MPUDs, so if we could transfer that language that we agree to in other MPUDs into this one, if that's acceptable to the applicant.
Okay, well, before we get, can we get a motion to fix paragraph, Condition 9 to reflect that change? I understand, I'm not suggesting that you're going to need to approve this project, I just need to get this issue fixed if we're going to move forward with this MPUD at all.
Okay, so do you need the, want to restate the motion that you're...
The motion would be to amend Condition 9 to say that, to add a phrase that except for the, except for the park attributes depicted on, neighborhood park attributes depicted on the binding concept plan, that the neighborhood parks depicted on the master plan have not been reviewed approved consistency with, later on, but you're just adding that exception for what's depicted on the binding concept plan.
Okay.
So moved.
So we have a motion? Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Okay, so that's been modified. Okay. Anything else?
Thank you.
Any questions?
Can you, Gavin, can you go back to the, you showed the different SPA zones? What is staff's, such your argument? How does staff support that in the mixed-use area that this plan meets the objective of the mix of uses that support recreational uses, cultural destinations? uses, cultural destinations, and educational facilities, mixed-use areas serving as neighborhood centers? So what's on this plan? What's shown on this plan that you say you can support that it meets that objective?
Yeah, so I would say that the mixed-use center, inclusive of the apartments and the non-residential uses, could be a potential neighborhood, neighborhood center, including neighborhood parks as well for the neighborhood.
I'm not sure I understand. Can you put the plan back up?
Yeah. Mr. Chair?
The master plan.
So if you see in that mixed-use area to the bottom, and actually, it's probably easier to see on this, this plan right here, the mixed-use building here is actually intended to bring, be brought up to Kenton Road, and align those buildings, and line that street, which is, has a 16-foot sidewalk on it, so people in the neighborhood could access that without actually entering the development, people who are on the actual public roadways on Kenton Road.
What's cultural, cultural about a mixed-use building and a parking lot?
I will say that not every project in, every MPUD isn't going to have every attribute of everything that's in the community hub, because there's also provision in there for...
Okay, so if this project doesn't include it, and the other MPUDs didn't include it, then how do we make sure it gets included?
So, we can include it in the future. Again, it's up to negotiations within the MPUD and what the developer will accept in those negotiations. I would love to include a cultural amenity in every single MPUD that I do, but it's really up to the negotiations that I have with the developer.
What if they all say no?
There's really nothing else within the LLC that would require me to handle that.
Then something's broken, isn't it?
I think what Mr. Moody's suggesting is there needs to be an overarching view of all the projects that are going on here to make sure that if this project doesn't include all those elements, that, that gets included in some of the projects that are going on, and there needs to be accountability.
Of course, of course.
That's consistent with...
Or maybe those need to be in the form of Land Development Code requirements, so that they're applicable to all and not on a case-specific basis.
Yes, David?
I, I think some of the confusion is that the Connected City plan wasn't exactly translated into the underlying zoning. So, the plan is aspirational, provides guidance, but the, the actual applied zoning for this area doesn't mandate these, these features and these components.
Isn't the zoning what we're here doing today?
This is an MPUD.
Which is the zoning, right?
It's to create a new zoning, but I'm...
Yeah, right. Well, I, I thought we were here to create that, though.
Well, yes, but I'm just telling you, the zoning doesn't provide exact guidance on use of property relative to the Connected City plan.
That's why I said something's broken.
Well, I'm not disagreeing, I'm just...
I'm not pointing blame, I'm just saying something's broken. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we have the same issue with schools. If we have all these small MPUDs, and they, I can't extract a school out of there, so if we have all these small MPUDs that come in, and they all say no, where do we get a school? Well, I mean, we figure it out, but it's not an easy task.
So what's the solution?
Well, the difference with schools is that, at least with schools in Connected City, there was a surcharge developed to help fund the acquisition of school sites. So, I didn't say I'm Mr. Williams concerned, but at least it was addressed.
Agreed.
And, and there are some school sites in...
Yes.
In Connected City, so it's not quite the same level of problem as missing cultural centers. Now, I will tell you that more recently, and this is evidenced at Starkey, the cultural centers of many of these areas tends to be where libraries are located, and we tend to, our libraries are morphing into sort of library slash cultural centers. So to me, the real breakdown here is, why was there not a library planned somewhere in Connected City? Because that could have, that could have functioned as the cultural center for Connected City, and we have a library impact fee. And has libraries commented at all on these MPUDs and said, hey, we'd like to have a library in one of these MPUDs that could function as the cultural center?
No, not, not since I've been processing the Connected City MPUDs.
We do have a, a library at Watergrass, as you're aware, and that's, they did not fit to Connected City, but it's inside Connected City.
Actually, Watergrass is in BOPH.
Oh, BOPH?
It's in BOPH.
To David's point, Terry Pito's planning, planning development economic growth, awful. There is a library on the outskirts of Connected City that has been identified as a need to service this area by the Libraries Department, is on the, what amounts to the northeast corner of Overpass and Curly Road, in the, in the old town center. It's, it's near Epperson, but it's the promenade, the promenade, which is by the same developer that Watergrass is. So, we've worked that out in a recent MPUD update.
So, so staff's position is that will effectively function as the cultural center for this area?
Based on conversations that I've been included in with libraries, they needed that particular site to serve this, this part of the county.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Mr. Moody? No. Okay. What's, what do you recommend? I don't. I'm just making an observation, and I want to hear the rest of the public's comments, but I, that was an issue that was brought up during the first airing of this case, and I haven't seen any argument to show that the MPUD meets the goals and objectives of that SPA zone within Connected City. Okay. Terry, any, you ever have a comment? Maybe when the applicant gets up, they'll have some argument for that, I don't know.
Terry Pito's, again, planning development economic growth. From a cultural asset standpoint, it's important to note, too, that within Connected City, but also, I think, county-wide, that parks play an important role in the cultural asset establishment across the county. So we do have local parks, neighborhood parks, that the individual MPUDs are required to set up. In this case, there's two.
They'd be required to set it up if they were building a regular subdivision, and neighborhood parks is a Land Development Code requirement. And Terry, in rebuttal to that, I mean, we're going to give them credit for the parks here, but the, the parks they're showing here are less than 50% of what the code requires for park area, just as they lie today. 380 units and 1.7 acres.
Connected City does have a varying parks requirement. The point of the parks requirement in Connected City, in smaller parks, is that they're supposed to be amenitized. So there is a table that says all the amenities that should be in the park, and they get to pick from those amenities.
Well, maybe that goes back to, you know, the point that David brought up earlier, was, you know, we make a statement about the parks and the combination of binding concept plan versus MPD plan and all that kind of stuff, but...
So, has staff reviewed these neighborhood parks to confirm they comply with the Connected City Land Development Code, and the, at least in terms of acreage? The answer is yes?
I believe the, yes, the answer is yes.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions before we hear the applicant?
I was just going to make another point to Mr. Moody's comment, and, and I agree with what David said also. I mean, what's that forced the school district to do is have to, I mean, yes, we get a surcharge, but it kind of, it forces us to be a little more proactive, and we have to go out and find a landowner who's willing to sell whatever amount of acreage we might need to build a school, which is fine, we've done that before, we continue to do that. VOPH was nice, because they had a more structured approach to do it, but in Connected City's case, maybe the, maybe the answer is the county has to be proactive in working with landowners to try to find a library site.
Well, what I'm hearing staff say is that the library, the primary library site in this area will be at Watergrass, the Promenade Town Center.
I guess if that's sufficient to cover that size area.
I guess that, that's, that's a policy decision for everybody to decide, but what I'm hearing staff say is that, that will be the cultural center for this area.
I'll come, I'll come back, let, let the applicant talk, and I'll come back to it, but I swear I remember some discussion about what the central amenity of Connected City was, and I don't think it was a library down Watergrass. Okay. Hi.
Hi. Chairman, thank you. Shelley Johnson, 6400 Madison Street, and I have been sworn. I do have my team available virtually today, they weren't available at the last meeting. If there's any questions in regards to traffic, we have Libby Rodriguez, Elizabeth Rodriguez, who is our transportation planner, and then we have Eric Milberg, who is our civil engineer that can answer any engineering questions that come up. We are, we have been working with staff since November to address some of the concerns and questions that were raised at the last planning commission meeting. We are in agreement with the revisions that were, were voted on with regards to condition number nine. We're good with the revisions to condition number 12 in terms of the LUM, and we're also good with the additional language that's been added to condition 50. But I, I think they've gone over that while, very well, I'll be happy to answer any additional questions on that stuff. I know my, my team is also likewise available to answer any questions with that stuff. I do want to get to Mr. Moody's point, because I do think I can add to some of that discussion. I put up on the, the location map, you can see Connected City, this particular parcel is in the northwest corner of the community hub. And if you look where that red star is, that's that property, that's the property we're dealing with. The three other sides of this particular property are bordered by what is now Marada, the North Innovative Zone, the urban core, which is one of the heavier densities within the Connected Cities, and that is in an adjacency to this property, and then also the business core, which is supposed to be more business-oriented, a little bit heavier in density. So this property is kind of at an apex, it's in a transition part of the Connected City's overall play, you know, overlay. When you look at the individual policies and objectives of Connected City, and I've read through it all twice, unfortunately, and you've looked at the Land Development Code and all the implementation procedures or mechanisms that they put in place to, you know, make those policies come to life, the one thing that it continually says over and over again is every single SPA zone area, including this hub, they want mixed use in that hub. So even though it says, these are the kinds of things we're looking for, because, and the reason this is a community hub is because of King Lake. So I think the idea is, around King Lake, from a planning perspective, you're going to have some recreation, you know, parks, nice things like that. As you move further away towards the North Innovative Zone, which is Marada, as you move further, you know, away from the lake towards the, the urban core and the business core, you know, you're, you're moving, you're, you're moving into more, more of that mixed-use element. So if you were going to put mixed use on this property in the community hub, you can have mixed use, and it, it literally in every single, it says it so many times in the objectives and policies, that they want it in every single zone. That's why this particular zone specifically only excludes industrial, because they want to encourage this in every single zone, so that every zone has its own sense of place, sense of community, all that good stuff. This particular one, which they were mentioning earlier, you see the vertical mixed integration, the apartment, you see the, not the townhome, which is in the back, but the office uses. What they're, what the intention is along that is when Kenton Avenue is actually built, it's going to have that sense of community, it's going to have that corridor, the streetscape, and that kind of stuff, and then you'll have the vertical integrated, the apartment with, you know, retail office, whatever underneath it, and then you'll also have the, the site-ready service site, the, the office site. So where this particular property is, is in the community hub, it's doing exactly, actually what the planners have done with the county and, and the Beacon Team have done exactly what is called for in your comp plan. So, you know, I think that's important to point out, because it gives you a little bit, I think, you know, more of an overall perspective of what this property is doing, where it's at, why it's being planned this way.
Mr. Chair, can I ask?
But I will be more than happy to answer any questions.
So, Shelley, this may be a question for your engineer, but...
Sure.
And you know this came up at the last meeting, but if we could put the binding concept plan back up?
Let me get back. I don't know, I'm not good with these things, hold on a sec. I might be able to do it this way. There we go.
So, one of the major issues that was raised at our last meeting was, well, you went past it.
Oh, good lord, hold on, guys.
It's on the left.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Well, the question is, if we can ever get it back up, is...
Yeah, there we go.
Is, is your engineer confident that, given the wetland and floodplain mitigation constraints on the site, that that plan is actually permissible? And so I'd like your civil engineer to get up and explain how that's permissible, given the wetland and floodplain mitigation constraints on the site?
Yes, and he is available virtually, so Eric Milberg, he can definitely answer those questions for you.
I assume he'll need to be sworn?
If he did not swear in when we swore, if he else in, yes, he will need to be sworn.
What'd you say, you said Derek, is that what you said?
Eric Milberg, yeah, he's the civil engineer on the site.
He is unmuted. Eric, if you can speak, you are unmuted, so you should be able to talk.
Okay, can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah, yes, Eric, you, you haven't been sworn, so I'd ask you to stand, raise your right hand, and I'll just trust you on that one. And repeat after the clerk, please.
Sure, thanks.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give as an attorney's attorney?
I do.
All right, thank you. And could you give us your name and address?
My name is Eric Milberg, I live at 5224 Net Drive, I'm actually in Tampa, Tampa, Florida, 33634.
All right, thank you.
Eric, did you hear the question?
Yeah, so the question was, how can I, am I confident that this layout will work based on the floodplain patterns? So I've looked into the watershed model that the site resides in, we're in the Cypress Creek watershed, and the only offsite flows that we receive is from the north, so I can accommodate those offsite flows and have it discharge into that, into Pod 1 on the north there. And with regard, and the, the site only outfalls to the southeast, I, I can, I can, you know, put a series of pipes in there, probably very near to that multi's path, near that mixed-use building, to, to, to make it be just flow pattern. So this, this concept plan should be, you know, this is...
What about the wetland impacts?
So, these are all category two and category wetlands. We, you know, we will have to mitigate for any kind of wetland impacts per Land Development Code. So, yeah, I mean, we're, the only thing really can impact is category one, nothing out of category one, category ones are 180, 184, and above that full, that's not the situation we have out here. So, you know, whether it's...
I don't know about everybody else, but I'm having a real hard time understanding what you're saying.
Yeah, I couldn't hear the last thing you said, about the, how you're dealing with the wetland impacts, if you could repeat that.
Okay.
Slow down a little bit and speak right into whatever you're speaking into.
Sure. So, the onsite wetlands are all category two and category three wetlands. Those are allowed to be impacted per the Pasco County Land Development Code, I think it's under chapter 803, I think that's a section. So we, we will be allowed to impact those wetlands if we have to mitigate for them. But, you know, I don't, I don't see any issue with impacting these existing wetlands.
Well, let me, let me clarify my question, it wasn't so much whether the impacts were allowed by the Pasco County Land Development Code, the question was really, are you confident that the other permitting agencies, such as SWIMUD, will permit those impacts, and if so, where, where would you mitigate for the impacts?
In all likelihood, we would mitigate for the impacts offsite, they have mitigation banks that you pay into. During SWIMUD permitting, they're going to make, they're going to have their environmental scientists go out and ensure that the wetland limits are, are correct. They typically, it depends, it depends on the quality of the wetlands, if it's a very high-quality wetland, that's like, sure, that's, that's, that has a lot of wildlife living in there, but then to, to have developers to preserve as much of those, preserve as much of those as possible. I don't believe that's the case here. I think these are all just caltons. So I don't... So I don't
You're fading out again. Please.
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
I said you're fading out again. I don't know if you're getting further away from your source or what, but you need to slow down and speak more clearly.
Okay. So, the wetlands that are onsite are category two and three wetlands. They're low quality, meaning they're not serving, there's, there's not a lot of wildlife in there. So I don't believe SWIFTMUD's going to object to impacting the existing wetlands.
And your plan is to mitigate for those impacts by offsite mitigation bank?
Correct. That's what I assume we'll end up doing.
That conflicts with condition 50 now, then. The said wetland mitigations will be located within the residential portion of the MPUD.
No, I think what that, I don't want to interrupt, but what that condition is saying is that none of the mitigation can go into the, the site-ready site, the office building, you know, where the office square footage is going to go, and/or the apartment site, which is again along Kenton, which will be the vertically integrated, it's required to have that, it's required to have vertical integration period, but then, you know, it has to be at least 12,000 square feet, it has to serve offsite. But that's what that's applied to, it's just saying you can't do any of the mitigation on those sites.
Shelley, I think he's technically right. It does say, if your intent is to locate it either in the residential portion of the MPUD or in an offsite mitigation bank, it probably should say that. Right now it just says, any mitigation required for these areas shall be located within the residential portion of the MPUD. Your engineer is saying that is not your intent, that your intent is to locate it in an offsite mitigation bank. So if that
I hear what you're saying.
If that's your intent, and if everybody's okay with that, and I don't know if they are, we would have to add or offsite mitigation bank.
Yeah, and I'm fine with that. I think what we intended when we wrote it was just to make sure that we were preserving as much upland, you know, developable acreage for the
So let me, let me ask staff.
But yeah, we're fine with that.
Mr. Dutter, whoever wrote this condition, staff have an objection if it, because you all wrote this condition, do they have an objection if it said, shall be located within the residential portion of the MPUD or an offsite mitigation bank?
No, PD doesn't have, doesn't have an opposition to that language.
Okay.
Shelley, is the wetland exhibit that we're seeing in our, the survey, has that actually been verified by the Ward Management District yet? Is that a formal?
Yes, it's a wetland, it is a wetland delineation, there's a class two on the site, and there is a class three on the site. Both, I guess, are fairly low quality. We did have Jackie Jordan, who's a senior biologist with the county, review them and review the wetland delineation, and she confirmed it's a class two and a class three, so.
But this is formally verified, so this is a, this is a, that's what, about approved survey?
Um, I don't know if it's a SWIFTMUD approved survey, but it is, it's a survey. And the county senior biologist has looked at it as well, so.
Shelley, on those lines, I mean, condition seven specifically says the categories will be finalized at the time of SWIFTMUD approval.
Yeah.
So if they've already been determined and classified, I, I would, when I read the conditions, I didn't think that the classifications were set yet.
Well, typically at this level, you don't get this detail.
Well, I, I get it, but that's not what you misrepresented.
Yeah.
You represented they had been determined by Jackie to be twos and threes.
Jackie Jordan, yeah, she sent an email out that had, had looked at the wetland delineation, the survey that was submitted by our surveyor who did the wetland delineation, showing you the class two and three, submitted those to Jackie Jordan, the senior biologist. She reviewed them, and she made a determine that, I believe she made a determination that A, I have it right here, if you want me to enter it into the record.
Shelley, just, just to clarify.
Sure.
SWIFTMUD doesn't care about classifications of wetlands.
Right.
And Jackie confirmed, that was my question.
Yeah.
Did Jackie provide you classification of the wetlands? Because this says that she didn't.
Yes, she actually sent an email that said she classified wetland A as a category two, and wetland D as a category three. And I can enter the email into the record if you need to.
Jackie's online and raising her hands, maybe we should hear from Jackie directly.
Yeah, obviously, yeah.
All right, let's take, let's do that. Jackie?
Yes, so, um, we have a approved SWIFTMUD survey. It did however expire in July of this year, or this past year, so I informed them that they will need to have a new updated survey that's valid when they submit their site plan. But based off of that survey, we did make the determination that they are category two, and a category two and a category three wetland. So we have not revised the, uh, conditions since we reviewed their application originally, and we did not have that delineation at that time. So that's why we use our standard, the categorization, when we determine when we receive that approved wetland boundary survey.
Okay. Let me answer your question, Dan.
Yeah, I
David, can I ask a question? And Shelley, maybe it's up you too, my understanding of condition of approval number 50. Does this condition insinuate that you need to go in and basically get a SWIFTMUD permit for your, the masquerading of the office building area and the mixed use building area when you attempt to develop the townhome property?
I think that's exactly staff's intent.
Mm-hmm.
Staff, I think staff's intent is that they want to make sure that if this project gets developed, that the service-ready site and mixed-use area are actually become developable uplands. Because that, we heard some testimony at the last meeting that, that was the important part of this project to staff, and so they didn't want to see it become wetland mitigation or floodplain area.
So, condition number 50 prevents the developer or a future developer from parcelling off what's shown as townhomes on this plan and attempting to permit those by themselves without taking care of the wetlands on the two, the office and mixed use area?
Yeah, I, to be clear, can I, could Patrick up here to clarify? I think they could permit the townhomes at a site, from a site plan perspective, independent of the, the mixed use in office buildings, but not without making sure that those areas were basically uplands.
Or developable.
In other words, this speaks to masquerading and stormwater infrastructure, so it doesn't say that they have to get preliminary site plan approval for the entire thing at once.
Well, how, well then how do they accomplish that?
I guess I'll get Patrick up here to explain it, but I, I read it as they're going to have to do a masquerading stormwater plan for the entire site, not necessarily preliminary site plan for the entire site. Is that accurate?
Accurate. Sorry, Patrick Dutter, planning, development, economic growth, accurate.
And you've been sworn.
Yeah, do I need to be sworn? Yes, sure.
Now, what guarantees that they finish it?
Finish the masquerading?
Yes.
Well, they wouldn't receive a earthwork permits unless they, you know, went through the review and approval process. And I think there are certain timelines for work to be completed on masquerading activity. And I would think with that condition, they probably couldn't move forward with a preliminary plan, construction plan, whatever, for the residential component if that masquerading piece is not completed.
All right, I do it.
Yeah. Okay. So, I guess while we're on the subject of condition 50, and I know, I'm not going to say whether you all agree or disagree with it, but can we get a motion to add the or offsite mitigation bank to the end of the second sentence?
So moved. Second.
Other discussion, all in favor?
I'm sorry, that's the end of the third sentence, end of the third sentence.
Other discussion, all in favor? Should be fine by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign? Okay. All right. Is anybody here that wants to speak to this, who's ever on the list? Feel free to come forward.
Chairman, I may need all 10 minutes. Michael Pultorick, I'm on record. Can you put up the second PowerPoint? We didn't use the first one. No, the other one. Thank you. Thank you. This is the comprehensive plan amendment for Connected City. This is what was adopted in 2017. This is the playbook, this is the handbook. I'm smelling another bait and switch, and I'd like to show you why. This is what this originally came in as, 380 multifamily dwelling units, 180,000 square feet of non-residential uses. This is what's actually in it. And specifically, it says 216 apartments. That's key here. This is the school impact analysis, which confirms there's going to be a minimum of 190 apartments in this mixed use. That's the plan we've looked at. Specifically, if you look at the pictures to the right here by Hight Design that are included with this plan, and this is their other pictures from mixed use. Our first hiccup here is the community hub zone, if we look at housing options, which this is in the community hub, single-family detached, courtyard houses and row houses. Down here, we call them townhouses. In the business core, in the urban core, you can have apartments. There is not to be apartments in the community hub zone per your comprehensive plan amendment. That was not the intent. Now, I understand LDC does not state a threshold on R3 versus R4, medium to high density. So we've got to use some common sense here, and we've got to take some intent on the project itself. We're not supposed to have apartments in the community hub. I keep hearing the words, recreation, recreational, and parks. A little side note is, we have concluded the county never edged out areas in the Connected City or the community hub for the parks and recreational area. There's none. The parks and recreation has been moved east of Hancock Road, outside the Connected City, east of Pasadena Hills. It's all been moved out to the new super complex. There is not parks, there is not recreation, there is not trails in here. I'd like to point out here, if you look at the open space options for all five districts here, the very first word of each of the districts starts with parks. Parks. Large district park. Parks. And parks. A neighborhood swingset inside a townhouse community is not parks for the master plan. That is for the individuals in the 164 townhouses and the umpteen apartments, 216 in the latest one. That's for those people to go out in the backyard and have a swingset. That is not parks for the Connected City. That's my first issue here I'd like you to consider. The second is this site plan. The access and egress to this is going to be based off of where utilities is brought in, which is based off the April and the Kenton MPUDs. It's going to be Kenton Road coming in from the south. You have a two-lane dirt road from McKendry all the way out to almost Gov. Row of unpaved area. Everybody traveling west to the interstate, all the service vehicles coming in for our town center and distribution center, everybody traveling in and out to the Eater Tainment is going to be traveling a two-lane dirt road. Everybody traveling to the east to come to Date City and San Antonio is going to be traveling a two-lane dirt road. This road cannot handle it, even though Kenton Road will be the access and egress to this project. Natural resources and conservation. Natural resources serve as a significant asset to a community, a wetland serves as a natural flood control resource, and house a diverse ecosystem for animal and plant life. When I left on Monday morning to meet with staff, I drove past this property, there was a bald eagle in a tree. That told me we're fighting the right fight, and this is ridiculous at this point. This site plan does not have any wetlands listed in it. There is no wetlands that are protected. Here's your topo map that's been submitted with the site application. All of those pretty colors for everybody standing behind me are all wetlands. This is a cattle bottom. This is a basin where the west, the north, and the east drain into it, and this becomes a watershed. Now, what's unique about this survey right here is if you look at where the pretty purple stops, it's almost as if the water doesn't go anywhere. But I'd like you to see some different maps that might tell a different story. Here is your flood maps from GIS, and even Google's smart enough to say, there's a lake in the middle of this. You're going to put townhouses and 180,000 square feet of office space on that portion of the lake. This flood map comes from the GIS with topo. This is the aerial, so everybody can see where the water holds. If you look, well, this is a pretty picture with the bus station and the urban core too, but if you look here, these floodplains all come out to the southwestern corner of this This was pictures a month after the hurricane, where they're all still holding water. And if you look at the GIS mapping here, I had to take a snippet from the computer, but underneath that envelope, on the bottom left there, you can see that blue continues down past where their survey is. That's important, because it continues down, that's the east side of the county land, and there's a swale there. So even though the topo map doesn't show it, underneath all of those trees, they're nice and healthy because they get plenty of water into the soil, there's a swale that goes north and south on the west side of Tyndale Road there. This map, you can see the swale comes all the way back down to Tyndale Road and where it crosses. And where it crosses there, you can see the topo map shows 101 feet. This is that road. This is that road, and you can see your marker for your underground water discharge. You can't refute the water that's sitting right there. It took a Jeep to get through there. Now, as we back out a little bit, you're going to see that this also backfeeds the class one wetlands that's on, in that portion right there. This, if you look at the picture on the left where it says Kenton Road, you can see that class one extends south. Where it says Fussell Drive, this is Lakeside Estates. Those are all homes in there. They were almost flooded out with these storms. This is a zoom-in of Lakeside Estates. You can see how close the homes are to the flood area. This is the topo map. There was homes within six inches of flooding out this summer because of the discharge that starts at this parcel of land. That's all of the flooded areas, class two, class three. This is what it backfeeds, and that to the right is the road we're talking about. This is where we're putting progress. This is where it backfeeds to. That's Kenton Road. Kenton Road had three feet of water on it. The watershed starts on this parcel, whether or not the current maps show. The east side of the county-owned land there has a north-south swale that allows all the water to get off of this property. If that land is taking water from the west, the north, and the east, it has to hold it to allow it through permeable surface to get down into the ground. If it is shedding the, all of the water that's supposed to land on that parcel, that water is going to end up in Lakeside Estates. Gentlemen, the community hub is not designed for apartments. It is not designed for vertical integration. The community hub is the center point of the entire Connected City to have parks, recreation, and a place people want to live. Every rezoning project so far has turned into another subdivision. With a playset for the people that live in it, there is no amenities. The community cannot get to King Lake. The two fancy swimming pools have turned into pay-to-play operations where the developer is taking the money from it. They're not amenities. We can't use them. There is not a single park, there is not a single recreational area, there is not a single amenity that's in the Connected City that's accessible to the community hub. If the town center builds it into its plan west of McKendry, fantastic. But so far, I've heard Eater Tainment is the best we can do for amenities. But so far, I've heard EaterTainment is the best we can do for amenities. How can we get kids off of their phones and tablets and off of the video games in front of their TVs if they can't go out here and have some open space to run away, run around? What happens when we take slices of grass around retention ponds and we call them parks? What happens is the CDD, for liability reasons, has to put signs up, no fishing and no swimming, so you don't get eaten by alligators. The problem is, when the boys try to get out in these neighborhoods and they try to go put a line in the water and catch a bass or do something away from technology, HOA Nazis run out there and say, this is private property, you can't be here. So we cannot take slivers of grass through the community, call them parks, when we all know the boys aren't allowed to go play on them. We've got to have some space to be a community. That's the very definition of every one of these districts, is to have parks, have a healthier lifestyle. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Garrett, can I ask Mr. Engel or Mr. Petos a question?
Yes, Mr. Engel or Mr. Petos?
Well, if we could get the comp plan back up there that was referred to with the different uses.
Come on up and wait. Yeah, he's just, he's going to ask a question first before you start.
There was a slide that was shown by the prior speaker that had various uses by district and had the parks language in it. Can you go back? There you go. So my question for Planning Department is, when the parks master plan was developed and the park impact fee was, a park impact fee that went to this commission, and I realize this commission voted against it, but it was ultimately adopted by the board, but that parks master plan did not include a district park in Connected City. So my question is, so there really is no funding source to develop a large district park in Connected City, and my understanding is a lot of the Connected City impact fees are actually going to the VOPH superpark. And the stats plan was that the VOPH superpark would become the district park for both VOPH and Connected City. My question to Planning is, when that, all of that happened, probably after this Connected City plan was developed, why didn't we go in and fix this reference that says there's going to be a large district park in the community hub zone if that was never the parks department's intent or Planning Department's intent? Because it's a legitimate point. I mean, every other zone, it just says parks, which presumably are neighborhood parks. For some reason, this one says large district park. That may have been the original intent, but the parks department never developed a funding plan or master plan to actually put a district park in Connected City. So when that happened, why didn't we go in and fix this reference in Connected City? Or does that need to happen still?
Antonio Petos, planning development and economic growth. I don't know why, well, I can't speak exactly to why the comprehensive plan for Connected City was not updated with regard to the large district, district park reference. I think it may have to do with the fact that it's aspirational in the sense that one could still be established, but also one was being sent to VOPH. So in, in some sense, the large district park is being established, it's just not within the Connected City geography. Now, the references under the community hub zone, I get that, and you could run a comprehensive plan amendment to make that change, but the net effect is still that the large district park that was envisioned aspirationally within the Connected City comprehensive plan is now in the VOPH superpark.
I get that, but my concern is it becomes misleading to the residents of Connected City if we're saying that the community hub zone's going to have a large district park when we all know that the parks department has not developed any plan, funding plan, any plan whatsoever to develop a district park in Connected City and that they're fundling all the money in this area to the VOPH superpark. And my recollection is that part of the reason that Connected City and VOPH were required to have this entire golf cart network of, you know, infrastructure was so that anybody could take a golf cart to this large district park in VOPH, and that was going to be the, in fact, some of the Connected City money, roadway money went to VOPH to build a road to the superpark. So I, my question really is, when the board took all of those actions, adopted a master plan for parks, didn't include a park in Connected City, funded all the money to the VOPH superpark for this area, and it just seems like at that point, we should have said, that's not happening anymore in Connected City, let's take it out of the plan. Because to me, it becomes, it becomes misleading to the residents of Connected City because it is a very valid point that every other zone is just saying parks, and that one says large, that does imply that they're going to get something different in the community hub zone than just normal neighborhood parks. So I think at this point, it's because of other board actions, it's probably too late to get a large district park and, and there's no funding source identified for it. I'm not sure that ever could happen in Connected City anymore, but we shouldn't continue to have references in the plan as if it's going to.
Understood.
Okay.
Terry, could you also speak to what the gentleman brought up before about the use of apartments within the community hub zone, even though it's, I understand this is aspirational, so.
So the Connected City comprehensive plan doesn't identify the specific dwelling units per gross acre ranges, similar to the rest of the comprehensive plan. The overall comprehensive plan will say three dwelling units per gross acre and the rest three, and so on and so forth. In Connected City, the comprehensive plan was more flexible. It identifies medium density and intensity. What is medium density and intensity? That has been debated over the years with Connected City. The, some of the industry standards identify medium density to be on the order of twelve to eighteen units, dwelling units per gross acre. That's medium suburban density essentially. Here in Pasco County, that's traditionally been viewed as more on the higher end of the density spectrum. So when the Connected City was put forward, medium density was identified, you could get a twelve dwelling unit per acre project and read it as medium density. If we were to take the more common approach, Pasco County-specific common approach, medium density would probably read as eight dwelling units per gross acre, which would be, which could be interpreted as townhome density.
So Terry, to follow up on that question, so when it says housing options in this plan, is it your position that those are just one of many options? They're, they don't preclude other options?
I'm sorry.
Okay, so the point was made that under the community hub zone, it lists specifically lists single-family detached courtyard houses and row houses. Okay, as housing options.
Correct.
Are you basically saying that those are options, but they don't preclude other options?
Correct.
Right, as long as those other options were medium density and intensity? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, because courtyard houses, they, there isn't a prescribed density to a form of multifamily, which is the courtyard house. You can often get a courtyard house to fit in at eight dwelling units per gross acre.
Why is the word apartments specifically excluded? It's included in the business core zone and the urban core zone, it specifically says apartments.
Because density and housing options are, density and housing options are two different things. So we, you know, we understand it's medium density based on the density line item at the top, but the housing options, you know, again, that's, that's, it's kind of like having large district park when we know there's not going to be one there. It's kind of misleading for people to think, okay, these are going to be the type of building types that we're going to expect in this area, and then to have a completely different building type that's not listed in there. I think that's the issue. I understand it may fit within that medium density option, but, you know, in theory, if that's the case, and you can have, you know, something in the north innovation zone that's mostly supposed to be single-family, you can end up with apartments there as well because all of your property is taken up by wetland in the packs, and you have to, you can still be within the lower density by having one apartment building on a big piece of land that's taken up by wetlands, so.
I guess the other question, Terry, is, did staff ever consider, if staff's argument is this is effectively an extension of the urban core, which I understand it's immediately adjacent to it, was there any thought about just amending your urban core map to include the, the SRSA and the mixed-use area as part of, make it part of the urban core where high-density apartments are specifically allowed?
I think that was the intent when the original interpretation on this project first was born. In terms of amending the actual map, I don't think we've ever considered moving the urban core onto this, onto the subject parcel to cover the mixed-use areas. But I think that was probably some of the original interpretation, that this was a boundary area between community hub and the urban core.
And mixed use doesn't necessarily mean vertically integrated mixed use, it just has to be a mix of uses.
Although the particular conditions of this MPD, I think, does require it to be vertically integrated. For this particular, I agree with you in general, but I think this particular MPD...
And is that for traffic reasons?
I'll let Gavin explain why they required it, but I believe there is a requirement that this mixed use be vertically integrated.
Sorry, Gavin, go to planning development and economic growth. It's not for traffic reasons. They studied normal apartments. If they would have studied the mixed-use apartments, they would have gotten a lower trip generation, so they did do a conservative estimate with just regular apartments. In terms of the vertically integrated apartments reason, it's just a design standard for the extension of that urban core.
But that goes to my point, which is, well, calls.
And it also matches the roadway network that's prescribed in the MRP, so.
I guess that's really the root of my question, is if you were mandating a form that was consistent with urban core, why not just amend the comp plan to make that the western portion of this project part of the urban core?
I guess we just never thought about it, we just thought it as a, as an extension throughout the, through the MPUD rezoning process.
But I get your point, Gavin, I'm just, I, I mean, it seems like you have a little bit of a comp plan consistency issue here. I mean, I understand Terry's argument, but you're demanding a form that's very consistent with what urban core is showing, but you're not actually making an urban core. Patrick, you going to help save Gavin on this?
I mean, in hindsight, it probably would have made sense to label parcels in these transition areas as transitional, as a separate transitional parcel. So I understand the transition between the two zones.
Yeah, and as I mentioned earlier, the road that's going through here is an urban, urban road with a sixteen-foot sidewalk, so to have one side not be frontaged and the other side fronted, or having frontage with apartments or retail, isn't really something that would make sense.
Yeah. I think the bigger issue is, is holding this out to the public as this is what it's going to be and going, oh, we're just kidding, we're, really, we're going to do it this way because this makes more sense. You know, that's, we, this is the effort of being transparent to, to the citizens of Pasco County.
Well, let me ask, Terry, let me ask you, and Gavin, a question. How much work would it be for staff to initiate a comp plan amendment to, number one, fix this district park issue, so we're not telling the world there's going to be a district park in the community hub zone? And also fixing this, either adding apartments to community hub, if that's your position, or extending the urban core zone to include the...
Or how about, let's get them a park?
Well, that raises a different issue, which...
The commissioners have the ability to direct where funding goes. They, they can make the decision whether they're going to send money over to some VOPH superpark, or if they want to put a park in Connected City, but the public got sold a park. So what I'm hearing, the suggestion is, is, well, here, let's just change the documents to make it all better now rather than actually fix the...
Mr. Moody, I don't disagree with you if we had money to do so. The, the issue is that the parks master plan that was adopted by our board, and I realize this commission...
Well, then they can go fix that document.
It would likely require them to increase the impact fee, which, which can be done. I'm not saying that it can't be done, I'm just saying that that's more than just a, we're going to add a park to our, you, you, I don't want to promise these folks a park and then have no money to build it.
Well, we don't have the ability to promise them a park. I'm just suggesting that maybe if the problem is that there's no park, let's not just doctor the comp plan to make the park go away in the comp plan, that's what the public got sold, let's figure out how to get a park, and unfortunately, that's not the planning commission's purview to do, but.
Right. Right, all I'm saying is, we need the parks department to weigh in as to how much of an impact increase that would cause to add a district park in this location. I have no idea without running that by our parks department and our impact fee consultant.
Because the...
Because what I don't want to do is just say, oh, there's a park, we're going to promise them a park, and then never allocate any money to do it, because that's an empty promise too.
Again, that's not in the, the planning commission doesn't have the power to promise a park. I'm just making the suggestion that maybe that's something the commission should take up and discuss, rather than prodding the staff.
But I guess, well, hey, Mr. Moody, I don't disagree, that's an option, but I guess where I'm going with the suggestion is, maybe this application is premature until we fix the comp plan to have it mirror whatever it is the board wants to see in Connected City in terms of parks and apartments and, and the boundaries of the urban core. Maybe we need to have the comp plan mirror what the board really wants to see in Connected City before we start approving more rezonings that are, that may not match that.
Well, I'm not, I'm not going to disagree with you about that, and you're actually jumping ahead to something I will save me for later, so I'll ask the question now, and we've got a couple of Land Use attorneys in the audience too, because I'd like to ask them that have been involved in Connected City.
If I can provide an answer to Mr. Goldstein, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Terry, then.
So on the question of making a comprehensive plan amendment, I do want to go back into history a little bit with Connected City and note a few things. One, Connected City was identified as a place where flexibility would be key in terms of the development review process. The north innovation zone and the south innovation zone include Epperson or Marada and Epperson respectively. In each of those MPUDs, particularly Marada and Epperson, there are places where there are apartments. Although these densities in the table up there will indicate lower density and intensity, lower to medium density and intensity in each of these, the, I want to draw attention to common uses, where it says that residential uses and mixed uses shall be divided in all zones. And furthermore, in the document, it also talks about what mixed-use areas ought to have. Mixed-use neighborhood centers are something that have bidding, that are something that have defined what the mixed-use areas of Connected City ought to be. In this particular case, as I'm sort of researching this on the fly and going back in the notes here, I think what the initial interpretation was by this special districts manager at the time was that mixed uses would be allowed in the community hub zone and the... And the answer to that was to provide vertically-integrated mixed-use buildings. So they would mix the commercial land use with the non-residential land use with the higher intensity residential, similar in concept to what had taken place in the north and south innovation zones. So there has been some precedent in other parts of Connected City where that's, where that's been sort of laid out in that manner, which probably influenced how this was being organized initially. But to answer David's question, yes, we could go back and do a comprehensive plan amendment. Although the common uses section of this table seems to cover the existence of mixed use in all zones.
So I guess it does say in community hub and their predominant uses, it does list multifamily as a use. It's just odd that they, down in the housing options section, it didn't include apartments. Did, Mr. Moody's point, and I think others' point is that, why did we specifically put apartments in business core and urban core? And now the other three, if that was our, if our intent was to allow apartments in those other three?
I mean, I, I'm interpreting the comprehensive plan, the, the author of this section of the comprehensive plan. But to me, it appears that these areas were identifying particular stand-alone forms versus mixed-use forms.
Okay, well, it's not my job to interpret the comp plan, I'll defer to others on that. But it seems to me at a minimum, if you're not intending to provide a large district park in the community hub zone, that needs to be removed from the comp plan.
And we could take a look at that going forward. I just, I would note, too, that this area was previously served by, and currently is being served by, who has a district park that exists at, on our map.
I understand the serving part of it, Terry, the concern on, is that it says there's gonna be a large district park in the community hub zone, not outside of this, so.
So this is gonna be recreational areas associated with the lake.
And so, to clarify what you said before, David, the, the BCC has already allocated funding from some of these impact fees towards VOPH.
And I realize I'm somebody who may not have been here when we, the park impact fee came to the planning commission. I don't remember if you were on the planning commission. What was different about the last park impact fee update is that it was a plan-based fee in the sense that it was a fee that was developed to develop a discrete set of parks. Like, they actually listed all of the parks that would be developed using that fee. So unless they're going, unless the board wants to remove one of the parks on the list and build this one instead, they'd have to raise the park impact fee to build additional parks, because the fee was developed to create, to build that specific list. So to build a park here, and I'm not disagreeing with Mr. Moody, that is a possibility. But we either have to get rid of a park that was already promised to somebody else in the county, or increase the impact fee, both of which are options. I'm not saying they can't be done, but that's probably above your pay grade, you know, that's the. Okay, that's, that would be up to the board. The point is, if the board's gonna go with the, the master plan that was already adopted and the impact fee that was already adopted, it would not allow us to fund a district park in Connected City. We'd have to amend that, it's not as simple as just saying we're gonna give them a park. We'd have to amend our park master plan and amend our impact fee. Which is a, which is a possibility. But I don't think the Parks Department has any intention of, absent board direction, I don't think the Parks Department has any intention of pursuing that, because they're already getting enough brief as it is for their current impact fee. Some of that brief came from this planning commission, by the way.
I remember that one.
So I'm not sure this planning commission would be too receptive about a park impact fee increase, given the way you all treated the last increase.
Yeah, well, I sort of, you know, as hard as it might be to swallow, I sort of agree with Commissioner Moody, because, you know, I'm never in favor of promising something and not delivering it. And, you know, the bait and switch routine is never good. You know, I think in, in some fashion, it's incumbent upon the county to come up with an idea or a way to, to resolve this issue. I mean, I, I'm thinking, where I live, if they had promised a park in my development that I could take a golf cart to or whatever, and suddenly they had never developed it, I wouldn't be too happy about it. And even if they developed it in five miles away in some other area and called it my park, I wouldn't be happy about it. So, you know, sometimes we have to pay for our sins in some way to, to, to make it right. And right now, I feel like it's not right.
There's other ways to fund parks or to acquire land for parks other than through impact fees.
Even if it's at a technical level not against the comp plan, you know, from a 30,000-foot view, what most citizens see is, is kind of, it does look like a bait and switch, even if it's not technically a bait and switch.
I mean, I, I don't know what money we can take from where, I don't, that's not my expertise. But I do know that we have things like bed taxes, where we have lots of money in bed taxes that we collect every year. You know, maybe that some of that money can be moved.
I'll be clear, yeah, to be clear, I, that would be difficult. That, that is a restricted revenue source that can be used for tourism. And a tourism, as a tourism funding source, it has to be primarily usable by tourists, those from outside the county.
Couldn't someone have negotiated with all of the developers in Connected City to put up the land for a park, no different than they put up land for rights of ways and roadways? And that, that takes somebody being on law, but.
So, so the answer is yes, and in fact, that, that was exactly what happened in VOPH. All right, in VOPH, they did do negotiate with the developers, so all the developers would pay surcharge on their park impact fees that they would go to fund the superpark in VOPH. I can't tell you all the reasons that occurred, but that did not occur in Connected City.
Okay, that, it is what it is, I just want, I understand that. Is there gonna be a bigger discussion for the board on that?
Maybe Mr. Two wants to speak to it, if he can. He was involved, but he was here when I was, I'm here, too, so he wants to add to it, I'm, I'm welcome to, please welcome to speak up, too.
Joel, did you want to speak, Joel? And I think there was another fellow back there that wanted to speak, actually, I don't want to miss on.
He's been waiting patiently.
Yeah. Why don't you come sit up front here where we can, where I won't lose track of you here? Thank you.
Joel Two, 4700 Ridgeview Road, Palm Harbor, Florida, and I have been sworn. I do have another question and comment on this particular MPUD. But on, on the question about the district park, solely because I was a consultant, obviously, for the VOPH, POG, and the Connected City Special Area Plan. And I'm not, I'm not here to say that the decisions were right or wrong, but to give you some of the history on that. Originally, when the Special Area Plan for Connected City was done, you're exactly correct. You're reading what the original contemplation was, was that a district park site would hopefully be located from a willing property owner, and it would be purchased to provide your standard 80-acre district park. That was at the beginning. By the time we got to the point of the county adopting the financial plan for Connected City and saying how we're going to fund the roads, utilities, the schools, the parks, by that time, the county had already acquired, I believe, the second phase of the VOPH superpark. It was acquired in three phases. And just so you understand the, the concept behind what the board was thinking at the time, to my knowledge, is your standard district park's 80 acres. Your standard regional park is 160 acres. This VOPH park is about 240 acres. So it literally was three times the size of a standard park. So the board was hearing from the Parks Department that, well, it takes a lot of money just to acquire the land. And more importantly, we have zero funding to build park facilities. The Parks Department had multiple park properties, but no money to develop any of them. And so obviously, to the citizenry, they were worthless until they had facilities. So the financial decision that was made, as Mr. Goldstein points out, is at the point that we were trying to do the funding for Connected City and the park impact fees, a conscious decision was made that, yes, they recognized that Connected City contemplated a district park. In the minds of the board, they were voting to approve that district park. They weren't not providing it. They were saying, we're going to commit funding from Connected City to supplement funding from VOPH. It still has taken tens of millions of dollars more in county funding to actually finish the acquisition of the superpark, and more importantly, to construct the improvements, which are now funded and in the works. So you're probably correct when those decisions, and now, those were all made at public meetings. I mean, they, they were published Connected City meetings, where this subject was discussed numerous times. And I'm not saying anyone here was there or not there, but this was publicly discussed at length. And all of that collective funding was put on one large park. And part of the other rationale was we've required this alternative vehicle network, we've, we've required this connected trail system. We're connecting Connected City to VOPH. So the idea was that they would also make it relatively easy and functional for these people to use it, even though, as the chairman points out, it is three, four miles to the east. But any park of that size is typically more than three or four miles away from the area that it serves in the county. So it wasn't that it was an unusual arrangement. In hindsight, probably that plan should have been amended to acknowledge that that park element was being met through a cooperative funding of the superpark site in order to actually get it constructed. So that's the history, and again, I'm not saying that was a good or bad decision, but it, it was one that was consciously made. And the belief was that they would be providing that need and that promise, although admittedly, clearly outside the geographic boundary of Connected City. So I believe that was the board's, you know, expressed public intent. And I, I was at those meetings and obviously participated in that process, for what it's worth.
All right, thank you, Mr. Joel, I appreciate the update, yeah.
Do, do you want me to go ahead and address my, I have a couple of questions on this particular zoning?
This is public comment, so yeah, go ahead.
Okay, and again, these comments are, I'm also the consultant for Pasco Town Center for Collmar Holdings, the large town center to the west of this. And really, this is certainly not an objection. My client would never object to another project, but I have a couple of questions. If we could go to the binding concept plan again. We just did an economic development agreement amendment that Mr. Engel and Mr. Goldstein are familiar with. And I just want to be sure I understand what this, how this road network relates. I believe that future tendle right-of-way on the north side of this project is the future realignment of tendle that in fact heads west and comes directly into the center of that town center, that Pasco Town Center, which essentially is providing the town center for Connected City that otherwise hasn't been provided. So I just want to be sure I understand, because as Mr. Engel knows, right now, that's an off-site, unconstructed, uncommitted obligation. So I'm, I'm curious as to how this access and this road network ties into that in the big picture. Because my client has to construct all of our on-site roadway network, but is not responsible for that off-site segment of tendle headed east. So, you know, it looks to me like, I haven't read these conditions, but I assume that this owner is going to provide their southern one half of that future right-of-way. But I'm assuming there's no construction obligation in here for that segment. And I just want to be sure that that interpretation is correct.
But you're correct about the construction obligation. There is no, the, this project's construction obligation is mostly Kenton Road and to the south.
Okay.
Their, their representation to the county was that Kenton would be their primary access, not tendle.
Okay, so I just want to make sure, and this particularly is to you, Mr. Goldstein and Mr. Engel, you know, that the county's comfortable with that and that you're getting the right-of-way, because we all know we're gonna have to buy some right-of-way off-site there. So I'm, I assume you're getting what you can get here with a dedication?
I'm gonna need staff to come up and confirm this, but the, yes, the intent was that we were getting the right-of-way we need for Tindal Road for the ultimate VOPH cross-section that's needed, I mean, sorry, Connected City cross-section for, that's needed for Tindal, but I'll let staff confirm.
Yeah, I just don't, the only reason I'm bringing up is I don't want this to bite us, you know, where in that off-site missing link, we call it, for that east tendle segment to get to our town center.
I understand the point, but if we didn't get the right-of-way we need for Tindal, I need staff to tell me that.
Yeah, so in the binding concept, you can see the pink highlighter color. It does say 71 feet of right-of-way dedication on there, so that's half the right-of-way for the Tindal Road.
What is, where's the other, what's the northern half coming from?
It might be from Marada, Marada is located on the other side, I believe. I can double-check their dedication.
I think ultimately, what Mr. Two is asking is between these two projects, are we getting all the right-of-way we need for Tindal, for the future conveyance of, for the future construction of Tindal?
I was asking whether the handout map, could this give you a better idea of how our, our town center relates to that Tindal Road extension? I'm just trying to understand how the pieces of the gixx all puzzle will fit.
Mr. Chairman, why the map is being put up? I just wanted to give you an overview on Pasco Town Center. Pasco County is obligated to secure the right-of-way, design, pay for the design, and facilitate the construction of that missing link that we're talking about now.
Right, but I think Mr. Two is asking, David, is did we make life easier on ourselves by getting all the right-of-way we need for Tindal from this project and presumably the project is.
No, I understand the question, Mr. Goldstein. I'm just giving the commission, you know, just kind of broad context of what we're talking about. And, you know, you're absolutely correct, every, every inch of right-of-way we consume or through dedication will make the project less expensive for us.
Because there's no question that Condition 24 requires them to dedicate 71 feet along the north boundary of, for a future Tindal Road. And they have to accommodate the necessary drainage for that road, I believe.
Well, I think that was my concern, I didn't have the conditions, so.
Yeah, it, it's Condition 24, Joel. It does require them to dedicate 71 feet along the north boundary for future Tindal and provide, accommodate the drainage for future Tindal as well. I, what I don't know, and I'm, this is the reason I asked a question to staff, is, is that sufficient to? Is that right-of-way combined with whatever we're getting from Marada sufficient to, for that segment of Tindal?
Yes, we, we have the right-of-way from Marada, 71 feet from that, 71 feet from this one, that'll make for 142.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Is that true for the whole Marada project, all the way out going east?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, I do just want to note on record that we do have one person signed up for a public comment virtually, Tara Castro. However, all your other items today, nobody has signed us, signed up virtually.
Further on this topic?
You only have one individual for this item, yes.
Okay.
And we haven't finished getting regular focus.
To answer Mr. Paulin's question, at least from Pasco Mappa at the moment, there, there does seem to be a gap in front of the Remington MPUD, which is at Govro Road. But I have to research that specifically. Right now, to the west, we have the 71 feet from Marada, and to the east of Govro Road, there is Marada constructed. So for that one little segment, I'd have to research it further. So I don't have the answer to that right now.
Okay, I would assume that that would have been part of the conditions where Marada was approved to. to get that right-of-way.
Okay. You want to come up now? Thank you for being patient.
Jason Baker. Been sworn in, 8422 Sandin Drive. All right. Talking about this topic here, on the parks, on that tail end, if you actually read the comprehensive plan for the Connected City, pages 62, 63, 64, 65 are pretty elaborate as far as the parks and what was going to be built and what was expected. They call it a premier park. So, it's not just on a table. That's all I'm going to say about the parks. I'm going to echo Mr. Michael's comments regarding the apartments. You know, we already went through the tables. I don't believe it fits. If you read the LDC, you can read 522.9. It doesn't have apartments listed under mixed use. So, that's my second comment. Then I want to get into some stormwater and civil engineering comments. The two ponds, Pond One, Pond Two, get about 10 acres of stormwater. What did Eric use for design calculations on those ponds? Was it a 100-year, 24-hour rain event? Do we know that? That's... I want to get confirmation on that from the civil engineer. Also, if you look at the wetland survey that's provided in this MPUD proposal, Note Number 40... Note Number 11 actually states, "They didn't even do a wetland limit survey. They were using the data from a May 9, 2019 survey from another firm." So, now we're proposing somebody else's work to the board. So, how are we going to go forward with, you know, a survey that you didn't even really do? You're just restamping it. And then, number two, in 2019, Marada wasn't there, Epperson wasn't there, half a dozen of these MPUDs in the area weren't even around. So, I'm sure the wetland, you know, conditions on the ground are a lot different today. If you were to redo, actually do a wetland limitation survey again today. And then also, if you go through the Connected Cities Comprehensive Plan under Table 4.2, there's language that states, quote, "All SPA zones shall include strategies related to wastewater recycling, stormwater capture, and reuse." So, my question is, for this particular MPUD, we have about 10 acres of storm pond. What are we doing or how is this project going to reuse stormwater and support this initiative in the comprehensive plan? Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Do we have somebody from staff to answer some of those questions?
Well, to be clear, I don't know that staff can answer the engineering question. That was directed to the applicant's engineer.
Well, I'm just wondering if he's here, your engineer.
He was virtually.
Virtually? Okay.
He spoke before.
So, while the subject is on our minds, let's see if we can get an answer.
Is Eric?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, with regards to the survey, that was done by...
Now, I'm losing you again, so I don't know if you're moving around or what, but just try to be consistent.
With regards to the wetland survey, that was done by DC Johnson. We... They were subcontracted to determine the wetland delineations. We're not a licensed surveyor firm. We're not, like, stealing somebody else's work and restamping it. And he is correct that we will need to get another wetland survey prior to getting a SWIFTMUD permit. Those wetland delineations are... They expired back in July 2024. But, you know, I don't expect the change to be at the end. With regards to the project sizing, without... I don't have geotechnics to say that. We typically don't, you know, we have a... But we will be analyzing the 25-year, 24-hour storm event as well as 100-year, 24-hour storm.
Sorry. I just...
I heard 25-year, 24-hour.
Okay. It's just... To me, it's just not sufficient, the communication here, so... I always understood about half of what you said, Eric.
Well, I think that's on his end, because we've had plenty of people speak on WebEx, and we understood them perfectly fine, so I don't know what's going on.
So, it's not a sufficient answer in my mind, because I don't understand what you're saying. So, I'm sure if I don't, nobody else does either. Keep talking, and I'll tell you.
Okay. So, with regards to the wetland survey, that was... We will need...
Can you slow down? Slow down. Okay? Thank you.
With regards to the wetland survey, we will...
That's better.
With regards to the wetland survey, we will be ordering another one prior to receiving our SWIFTMUD permit. That SWIFTMUD permit is in condition of approval prior to starting construction. The storm analysis is that our run will be the 25-year... 24-hour storm event as well as the 100-year, 24-hour storm event. I haven't started a deep dive into the drainage analysis, because I do not have geotechnical information for the site. We typically do not order the geotechnical information until the ED plan is approved.
Why didn't you say that? Anything else you want to add to that? You have anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, I just wanted to address the... The address the comment that those are comp plan policies. I'm not familiar with the stormwater LDC section of Connected City, because I don't usually review that, so I'd have to do some research and get back for that.
Okay. Well, I... Can I ask him a question? Yes, of course. Says he intends to run the 25-year, 24-hour event and the 100-year, 24-hour event. Are you designing the project for the 25-year event or the 100-year event? In other words, are you designing this as an open basin project or a closed basin project?
The Cypress Creek watershed, which is an open basin watershed. That watershed model is what determines the FEMA flood allocation. I will be referencing that book heavily during my greatest design, and I will revise that book to incorporate its development.
Okay. Thank you.
So, how many years storm event will be included in that analysis?
Yeah, but I understand, but, for instance, our regulations, if this is an open basin, only make you mitigate for post-development versus pre-development flows for a 25-year event. If it's a closed basin, then we need to mitigate for the volume for the 100-year event. But you're telling me this is a... You're telling me this is an open basin? I don't know. I'm going to ask the gentleman that just spoke if he has an opinion on the matter as well, but I understand. Thank you.
Jason Baker again. I've been sworn in. The only follow-up comment, those were exactly my questions, Mr. Moody, is, you know, are we going to use a 25-year for the design or the 100-year? I will also point out in the county's comprehensive plan, Section 5.1.4, Table 10.4, under Item Buildings D, if you're going to have employment slash service centers, you have to do the 100-plus-one-year storm for a 24-hour rain event. That's what it calls for. That's in the county's comprehensive plan. So, it kind of defaults you to the 100-year plus one.
Well, that regards the elevation of the building. I'm more concerned about...
The storm.
The gentleman, Mr. Pultorek, showed pictures of a flooded site.
Yep.
It's this engineer's contention that this water has an outlet. It has someplace to go. What I want to know is, does this site drain, or does it hold water like a bowl?
Yeah. I would agree with that.
I saw a floodplain map that makes it look like it holds water like a bowl, other than some man-made little ditch that goes down and under the street and...
That was essentially my question.
Does that ultimately get to King Lake?
It actually goes towards me. I live in Lake...
Stop, stop. The clerk cannot pick up everybody speaking from the audience, so we need to have one speaker here and one speaker at the podium. Thank you.
You've answered my question. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. All right. And who's next to speak? Anybody else have questions? Let's see, come up and get up to the front here, so you can get a jump on it.
My name is David Torino. I live at 9350 Canton Road. I've already sworn in. Traffic. Traffic is terrible coming down Elam Road. When you turn onto Canton, I tried to get the county to get that straightened out so you can turn off faster, because there's a bunch of holes there. They're not going to touch it. So, you take a chance of getting killed on that road all the time, because people go 60 miles an hour down that road. It's a 30 mile an hour road. Now, you're talking about putting all these apartments in, all these... It was supposed to be single-family homes. Let's be honest. They just want to dump it all on us. I had to have 12 acres to build my house. He's got 12 acres. Well, probably everybody that lives on that lake's got 12 acres. Now, you want to stick a big apartment building so I can look at it. And talking about watershed, let's talk about it. My land, I bought it. I mowed it every year. Every year I mowed my property. My property has been flooded ever since they started the lagoon. That's a long time. You know why? Because they're dumping all the water on my land. My land was for flooding only. When the hurricanes came, it went through. Three months later, dry up all. My land, you can't even dig a hole anymore. You guys are killing me. And now, they want to start a new development right across the road from me. They're going to build that up, too. They're going to end up flooding these guys. I know they will, because the water's got to go somewhere. They've already flooded me. You seen that nice picture of that road where all that water was? Me. Guys, you're not right. Somebody told me I wouldn't get a drop of water. It's a commissioner. Another commissioner comes out there, somebody dropped a ball. The guy that come out that developed the property, he said, "Man, I can help you." You know what happened? The developers told him to shut his mouth. That's what happened. Guys, you got to think before you're doing this stuff. You're killing us. And as far as parks, let's talk about parks. We're going to be on the other side of all this beautiful stuff, like the parks they sold when they were developing Epperson Ranch. They're not for us. They're not in there for us. I'm an older person. I got to go way down to the park down there instead of having a park in my own community? Y'all, you give me a dirt road, you give me 12 acres to build on, and then you tell me you're going to do all this on the side, and you're going to kill me. Does that seem fair? I mean, I was all right with single-family homes. You guys, you're overdoing it.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi. Lisa Moretti.
Yes.
And I'm not sworn, so I'll swear.
Okay.
Do you swear or from the testimony you're about to give this the truth or help me God? So, help me God. Thanks.
Thank you.
One of the things that I was thinking about as we were talking through this that I think has kind of gotten lost in the mishegash is that this project was actually sort of like a demonstration project for the entire state. And I know the legislature's about to have a report card on the Connected City project as a model. And I think it is really short-sighted to then say, "Oh, just what? We forgot to make a bunch of changes." And, yeah, you guys go ahead and talk about that as a model, that other counties can then follow that model, but we're just going to go ahead and change almost half of what we talked about in terms of how this rolls out and what we designate as different portions of those connected cities. So, while it's easy for us to look at, "Oh, yeah, let's just make quick solutions," I think that there are larger implications to what you're doing that should be considered as well. And so, I hope you'll take those things to heart and really look at what's going on. I also think that we have a problem with vigilance in our county, and a lot of things get permitted, and then we just sort of out of sight, out of mind. And we don't pay attention to whether or not those things are being implemented as you all ask for them to be. And we have a large problem of that ongoing, both at the county level and in our municipalities. So, I would encourage you to maybe look at putting in some guardrails as we go forward and move into how we are going to continue to develop this county. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Nancy Hayeswood, 34110, a nice place. Mr. Moody, you're on the right track. I think you all do need to go ahead and give these people their part. This goes along with what I was saying earlier. You're up here approving things that the developers are not doing, so therefore, we are losing. You shouldn't be... They shouldn't... You shouldn't be approving things and then letting the developers do something else completely. You're taking away from the people. Again, how can we trust our government if it's proving lies, basically? Thank you.
Yes, David.
Mr. Chairman and Planning Commission, I didn't want to bring it up today, because it's... The cart would be ahead of the horse, but we are having internal leadership discussions on providing a park for this area. I don't have any official capacity to make an announcement, but I don't want the public nor the planning commission to think that we're just sitting on our hands. We are working on something right now.
Very good. Thank you, David. Okay, who's next? Anybody?
So, there are WebEx. Mr. Chair, we do have somebody on WebEx. If you'd like to take them next. Tara Castro, you should be able to unmute yourself and speak.
I'm making... Can you hear me?
Not well. Go ahead.
Let me try to play. I'm sorry. I've been feeling kind of under the weather, so I would best be home than to be in your presence, but I do appreciate you giving me the time. But what I hear on this meeting today is a bunch of dog and pony show.
Excuse me, Tara. Have you been sworn?
No.
Okay. Let's get to that.
Do you swear or from the testimony you're about to give this the truth or help me God? Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And your address is what?
26445 Lawrence Avenue in Wesley Chapel, Florida, 33544.
Okay.
So, first of all...
Thank you. Continue.
Thank you. Today, just watching this meeting, it's definitely a dog and pony show of who's running this government in our county. Just disgusting. Makes me frustrated. I want to touch on a few things, because I only got a few minutes, but I want to bring your attention to the document from the Pasco County Impact Study that was submitted with this plan. Did you see at the bottom where it says the percent of the school? And at the 20... We were over max capacity in 2023 to 2024 for the elementary, 152%. Middle school was 138%. And Wesley Chapel High School, 127%. They want to add more, and their mentality... It appears their mentality is just a few percent more won't matter. Again, it boils down to the money and the greed and not anything else about the infrastructure. Is this really fair to max the kids out at the builder's revenue? Talk about infrastructure, the roads. We already touched on that. We can't handle it. However, it makes me wonder what type of traffic impact study is being used? Who's reading this? Who's understanding it? The number of fatalities here in Pasco County just in the last month, that should have broken you guys up. The roads can't handle it. When was the last fire station school proposed to you guys? I haven't seen one of those requests come across for planning. Where are those impact fees going? Do we need an independent investigation or an audit? Wouldn't it be nice to have a fire station that could service these places in a more timely fashion than 20, 30 minutes? Wouldn't it be nice where schools can handle the increase in population expansion of growth? Definitely not no 20, 120%. Again, the planning and development thought of the applicants, and they don't think of the infrastructure. These guys, planning and development, are making calls... and are they, or are they being bullied by lawyers and these builders to approve and to send them out? But the bottom line is, you guys are the ones that are looking foolish in our eyes because you're the ones that are approving all these. And these guys are the same people that think we're playing apps, that they can push on a picture and it's going to just move and disappear. This is the dog and pony show we've got going on here in Pasco. I just also want to touch one more thing. The layout does not add. I'm sorry, sorry. But the infrastructure, I'm just going to go, the infrastructure it needs to be prior to any more building. And if you've also watched the story on Channel thirteen just last week, it talks about the housing market being oversaturated. Now, you're going to add more homes and my property is valued more than fifty percent in the last years and you're going to add more homes? Is this the live life act that's supposed to depreciate my values? I'm sure my taxes go down. You guys have a good day, thanks so much for taking me.
Okay. Chris, do you have any comments about the schools?
Sure, so this current school year, we just opened Kirkland Ranch K eight, which is helping the capacity out in the Wesley Chapel area. It's actually a magnet K eight, so it's pulling from that whole area and has reduced the overcrowding at Watergrass Elementary, Wesley Chapel Elementary, Summit Waitman Middle. Take a couple of years for that to come to full fruition. Certainly that hasn't fixed the whole problem, but we are currently looking at, you know, what the next high school will be in the area. Where we, the good thing is we have quite a bit of land that we've already secured. And so we, we continue to work through where that high school capacity will be. We've added capacity to West Effer Hills Elementary, which we're in the process of currently remodeling. And so probably in the next couple of years, we'll be doing a rezoning to help, help balance some of those populations out between West Effer, Woodland Elementary, probably New River Elementary, which is in the Wesley Chapel area as well as Chester Taylor. And so, yeah, I think that's where we are. It's certainly not always timely where we, where we meet it exactly and we don't have any overcapacity, but you know, a lot of folks may not realize, but back prior to the penny for Pasco in two thousand and three, two thousand and four, almost every school in Pasco County was over capacity. And we had some schools that were double their capacity. And certainly we haven't fixed everything, but currently overall, if you take all of our schools together, we are operating at eighty to ninety percent of capacity. And it also might be surprising that we only grew by about two hundred students in the entire county this year. I mean, certainly we see growth going on, but it has not resulted in the number of students. Certainly we have schools in, in high-growth areas that are growing, but overall countywide, it's a bit surprising, so.
Yeah, that's shocking, yeah.
Yes, but anyway, to answer the question, we, we, again, Kirkland Ranch K eight is the newest school there, which has provided some relief, but we're working on what the next schools will be in the area.
Okay. Good deal. Okay, so it's not as bleak a picture as it was painted, yeah. Okay. Thank you very much, I know you guys do a good job over there.
Thank you. And as David mentioned, in addition to the impact fee, both in Connected City and VOPH, there is an additional surcharge to help us acquire land and make those improvements.
Right. Okay. So there was no one else named to speak? Yes? Yes. You need to come up to the front here. Yeah, so we need you. You haven't been sworn?
Do you swear or from the testimony you're about to give to the truth or help me God?
Yes.
Okay, and we need your name and address.
I'm Charles Carey, C A R E Y. My address is one six zero three three Wards Court, Dayton, three three five two three, the man incorporated.
Thank you.
This is you being up to schools, I'm a substitute teacher here, often go to Waitman Middle. It's been nearly thirty years. We, believe it or not, has had eleven portables for thirty years, still has eleven portables that have fallen apart. The county is ignoring district this school. And, and I understand that the high school at Wiregrass Ranch has seven hundred students in portables at high school alone. This school's situation is out of control and overcrowded. We need to do something about it, but those are two schools that I'm familiar with. Also substitute K eight, which is a real very nice school, and they don't have eighth graders yet, so they, that's a very nice school. But what about Waitman Middle? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Chris, any comment?
Sure, just in addition to that, Waitman Middle has had some relief with the K eight. Well, again, no eighth grade this year, so as the students move up, it'll get an additional. We don't believe that'll be totally under capacity with that. So we are actually meeting later this month to talk about the possibility of adding wings to some schools. You mentioned Wiregrass Ranch High. We have over the years reduced that boundary by building new schools such as Cypress Creek and have reduced that capacity, but it's still over capacity, so we're, again, as I mentioned earlier, we're looking at another high school in that area to help solve that problem and/or build a wing.
Are we able to do anything about improving the portables or?
Well.
What's the situation there?
We have portables all across the county. Sometimes we don't, once we provide some relief, we don't automatically remove those portables unless we need them elsewhere. None of our, our maintenance department does a very good job of maintaining them. And so if there is a problem at a portable, the principal needs to report and our maintenance department will go out and fix them.
Okay.
Accordingly, we don't, we don't, we're not going to have our students in spaces that aren't kept up to date or at least kept in good working order.
Okay.
I need to be sworn.
Okay.
Do you swear or from the testimony you're about to give to the truth or help me God?
Yes, I do. My name is Don Lepla and my address is eighty-three forty-two Fussel Drive, Wesley Chapel, Florida, three three five four five. Live over in Lakeside Estates, where we're talking about. I have just one clarifying question to ask in that as it relates to the Tall Timbers MPUD. And that is with the Canton Road construction in that. That's been identified as the main ingress and egress for the Tall Timbers MPUD, I believe. And if so, is the Canton Road construction going to go all the way down to extend beyond Elum all the way to Overpass as is shown in the road overviews? And the reason why I ask that is because Elum Road, which I live on Fussel, it's right off of Elum, Elum has turned into a highway. And that, and it's, you know, it's a two-lane road that's really not engineered to handle that. So my question is, are we going to get some relief by having Canton Road built properly and extended all the way down to Overpass? That's it, that's all.
Alright, thank you.
Terry Pito's planning development economic growth. With regard to Canton Road, there are projects that are going to build Canton all the way south to Overpass. There's a couple of MPUDs. The road is currently under design at the moment. And we are working on having the developer of the Canton MPUD also construct the segment that is between Elum and Overpass. The existing Canton Road, both on the south end, which would be on the east or west side of Canton, and the existing Canton Road that will be on the north end, which will be on the west, east side of Canton, will continue to exist and provide frontage road access to the residents that are along King Lake, along the front, or along the north leg of Canton and residents that are just north of the Elum Road, Elum Canton intersection area on, on the west side. So they, they should continue to have access through the frontage roads that'll be there.
So Terry, just to clarify the answer to the question, because I'm looking at the conditions of approval. This project, Aprili and Canton MPUD are required to build it to Elum, according to the conditions. I think the question was from Elum to Overpass because those three MPUDs do not appear to be responsible for constructing it south of Elum. I think, I think he's asking about the gap between Elum and Overpass. Which, which, I'm reading these conditions do not, this MPUD and Canton and Aprili are not responsible for that, going south of Elum.
That's currently being worked into the Canton DA for the Canton MPUD development to build the segment between Elum and Overpass.
Okay, so that's the upcoming.
Yes.
So we're going to figure out with Canton MPUD to extend it south of Elum?
Yes. We're working on that.
Alright. I just want to make sure because if somebody only read these conditions, they would not know that.
Right, because we've been working on it this last, literally this last three weeks.
Okay, alright.
Does that answer your question? Alright, was anybody else? Okay. Pardon me? No, we don't break rules here. Alright. We could go on and on forever if I did that, so, you know, everybody want a third chance?
You do need to give the applicant rebuttal once, once we've heard from the public, so.
I think we've done that. Miss applicant?
Thank you, Shelley Johnson, again, six four hundred Madison Street, and I have been sworn and I have been listening to all the comments. I know that our civil engineer is on the phone and would like to respond to some of the stormwater questions and comments and the discussion that just was going on. Outside of the fact that, you know, obviously this is an open basin and it's going to be designed in accordance with Swift Muddin County regulations in order to get its permits. But he can, you know, add whatever additional, you know, information and questions there are to that. I did want to focus traffic. This development won't go in unless Canton Avenue is developed because there's no access, unless Canton Avenue goes, goes in, whether it be they, they ultimately build it or, you know, the three MPUDs participate and get it built. Tindall's not proposing access for this site, it is being ringed a line to the north as Joel was asking about a little bit earlier, and you know, that's going to create that, that east-west connection over to Marada and further west the other way. I did want to focus a little bit about the community hub because I did hear several times comments from the residents saying that apartments are not permitted in the community hub. If you look at the actual schedule of uses that was, had been up for a while this afternoon, it specifically does permit multifamily, which is apartment and townhome attached, which is what we are proposing. The apartment is vertically integrated use. John had asked if that was required, it's pursuant to condition forty-nine. It is required to be vertically integrated, so it's not just going to be a bunch of apartments. It's going to be apartments with uses underneath such as home occupations, you know, entrepreneurship, the type of things that, you know, Connected City is trying to encourage through job growth. That's really what Connected City is pushing for. So those will be vertically integrated, they're not just going to be your standard, you know, standalone apartments. And some of that vertical integration, you'll, you know, in the conditions of approval, it actually requires that a minimum of twelve thousand square feet of that vertical integration space, whether it be office or retail, actually serve off-site, it can't serve onsite. So the conversions, the conversions, you know, are in accordance with the, the comp plan. They actually permit only conversions from residential to retail or office and, and not a conversion back. Again, going to that, you know, job growth element. I did just want to quote a couple policies because I do think it's important, again, to reiterate that what is being proposed, I understand, you know, there's some confusion with regards to how it's set out and identified in the, you know, in some sections of the, of the plan with regards to the park and all that, I've listened to all that, but it does permit what we are doing, the goals and objectives do permit it. We are permitted to do the mixed use, the vertical integration, the multifamily, the apartment, the townhome. Those are all permitted uses under, under the current comp plan for connected cities. Policy L U D four point five, which is the land use and design section of connected cities, asks that there be, it's supposed to encourage flexibility and promote a mix of uses in all of the zones. And it is, you know, it specifically says you should establish a performance-based zoning for the connected cities overlay. Policy L U D four point six, which is again the land use and design policy for connected cities, says provide mixed-use areas within all SPA zones of connected city, not just one. And that's why when you look at that, and I understand the confusion, but when you look at that list, the only prohibited use on that list is industrial. That's the only thing you cannot do in community hub right now. Outside of that, you know, what we're doing is permitted, so I just kind of wanted to clear that up for the record. I don't, again, I don't know if my civil engineer wants to comment any further on the stormwater, but we're here to answer any further questions.
Excuse me, we're not speaking on the floor.
Shelley, I got a few questions, I don't know if they're for you or for staff, but I'll go through them here. As we go through the approval conditions, approval condition sixteen and seventeen, what I heard you say was is that Canton Road would be constructed as part of this project prior to any units, is that correct?
So it has the standard condition that the rest of the MPUDs have on it, which is, the only access to the site is going to be through Canton Avenue. So in order for this development to go, Canton Avenue's going to have to be in. The way it's set up right now through the various MPUD conditions and the development agreement that they're working on for the Canton MPUD, which is south of this site, the goal is all three of the developments actually participate in, in putting in that road from, you know, all the way down to Overpass as they just discussed. But this site specifically says that if those sites don't come in and they don't build that road, you know, you're going to build the whole thing. And that's what our conditions call for, so.
I guess my question, there's a, or, they can, shall construct or bond is part of the language.
Yeah, the standard language.
So, so if you bond the improvements, how are you getting access to your development?
Yeah, I mean, at the end of the day.
My question was there.
Because it's the standard, it's the standard, I mean, that's the standard condition. At the end of the day, this, this couldn't be, I mean, it is, it is the standard condition that you see in all of the MPUDs.
Because it's prior to their plat, so.
Yeah, it's prior to plat.
It's not uncommon when they get their plat approval, that they're bonding, they're doing the construction of the infrastructure sort of after they've gotten their plat approval pursuant to a bond, that's not an uncommon scenario.
They can't sell the lots without.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. My next one, and again, this is questions, I don't know if this is for you or for staff, on the condition eighteen where it talks about the signal and the warrant study and if not warranted, and it starts to talk about proportionate share, is, is that proportionate share for this project, is that determined? Or is that to be determined, when does that get determined? It just looks like it's a pretty open-ended condition, that was my question.
Well, I mean, it's prior or concurrent with issuing the third, the three, the building permit for the three hundred and first dwelling unit. Yeah, they'll have to do a, conduct a signal warrant study to see if it's warranted to have an actual signal at Canton and Elum.
I follow that, and it says if the signal's warranted, you'll construct it, if it's not already there.
Right.
But if it's not warranted, you're going to be responsible to pay proportionate share funds to the county. I mean, is that standard that those proportionate share funds aren't established and why, why do you have to weigh?
I can, I can ask Mr. Cleo if he wants to weigh in on that, but I suspect it is because there's two other developments that access that signal and so their proportionate share is going to be dependent on the proportionate share of the other two.
But you're already approved, right?
Yeah, I, I don't know why there's not, I mean, I have seen this condition where there's a specific amount inserted, but that being said, I don't. If you, if you calculated it today, by the time the signal's built, it may cost twice that.
Yeah, I'm not saying dollars, I'm saying percent, I mean.
Oh, you mean the percentage?
Percentage. I guess at some point, if the applicant's comfortable with it, it just seems like it's an open-ended condition. And you could get to the end and they could say you're ninety percent.
Well, I think staff is relatively fair about this, I mean, I think they do do the percentages based on, we've never, we've never had major. We've never, we've never had major disputes about proportionate share. But if Mr. Cleo wants to weigh in on that, I'm happy to have him add to what I just said.
David said it correctly, uh, if it's not warranted, then you will, you know, have a good, uh, pause in there. We can do that at time of site plan as well, when the trailer, because they're still supposed to do an access management analysis when they come in for a site plan. So the study that they did, which is a timing and phasing study, a time of zoning, it really, um, it's not the finality, so the finality is when they do an access management, other things may come up at that time, which they will be responsible for, but if it's not warranted at that three hundred and first trigger, then yes, we do, uh, assign a percentage based on the number of trips that each of those projects generate.
Okay. Alright, um, again, Essie, you're probably the one to answer this anyways. Condition twenty-four talks about right-of-way dedication. Where does the right-of-way for the Canton portion adjacent to this project come from? There's a hundred and fourteen feet of right-of-way, where does that come from? Because that's outside of the limits of your property, correct?
Yeah.
And I just don't, I don't see it identified on the maps.
I do have our transportation planner also available, if she wants to answer that question.
Uh, I can also answer that really quickly, it's coming from the, the facility site on the west. Uh, we talked to them prior to this MPD even coming to public hearing, and they agreed that they would dedicate the full portion for that road.
Okay, alright. The next question, condition forty-nine. Item C in the mixed-use standards, there's language in it that says the maximum setback from a proposed Canton Road in Timber Roach will be ten feet, it's talking about the apartment buildings. So that's saying the building setback for those apartment buildings can be no more than ten feet?
Yes, um, that is correct. Like I mentioned earlier, this is an urban typical that has a sixteen-foot sidewalk on it, so we wanna get those buildings as close as possible, so that office ground floor is fronting actually on Canton for people to walk and access.
I mean, I know we, we're starting to get into the weeds here in MPDs, and I get it, there's binding concept plan. The binding concept plan also includes, it shows a ten-foot landscape buffer. Has that been determined, that that's the landscape buffer required adjacent to that road? Um, I, my question and where I'm going with that is, I would think there'll probably be a fifteen-foot buffer on that road, so this, this condition is gonna cause a problem.
It could, correct, it could, we could do an alternative standard for the landscaping to make sure that, or a variation for an MPD to remove that right now, but then that would allow for the buildings to go.
And when you go back to the binding concept plan, the binding concept plan shows the building much further away than ten feet in the road, because there's a line there for a ten-foot landscape buffer. So that's, that's where that question was coming from, I think there's some conflict there.
Correct.
How do you, I mean, is there a way to resolve that, I mean, do we need to propose some kinda...
I mean, my understanding, and I haven't looked at it in detail, is that the, the typical section that, and, and the way it's been laid out is in accordance with whatever the Connected City design standard is for the roads. I mean, if there's an issue with regards to something on the binding plan versus getting continued, you know, whatever the, the commission's decision is today, obviously, we'll, you know, we'll take a look at that, you know, before the Board of County Commissioners and address it to make sure there's not any conflict, but...
I'm probably not sure what staff's intent is, do they, do they want a landscape, fifteen-foot landscape buffer from this road? Mr. Jordy's point is if you have a fifteen-foot landscape buffer, it's almost impossible for you to have a ten-foot setback.
Or a maximum setback.
So, we, you, planning commission could direct one of the two change...
Yeah, and...
But I don't know what staff's intent is.
I mean, again, if you wanna put up the binding concept plan, the binding concept plan does show a lan- ten-foot landscape buffer, so maybe that's the intent. But then again, it shows that building significantly behind, there's a significant space between that ten-foot landscape buffer in that building. That real tiny print there, to the left side of the building, says ten-foot landscape buffer. So, my engineer mind wants to say that that building is forty feet.
If it's, if it's the scale, yeah.
It's not showing right up against the landscape buffer.
I'm sorry, I was talking to Patrick for a second, so, um, can we just give a quick recap to...
Yeah, to the, to the left side of the mixed-use building there?
Mm-hmm.
There's some real fine print that you cannot read at this scale.
Mm-hmm.
It says, if you zoom in, it says ten-foot landscape buffer. Is the intent to provide a ten-foot landscape buffer on that parcel?
It is not the intent of that, it is...
That's not the intent?
That's not the intent, the, the intent is to bring the, the buildings as close up to the road and sidewalk as possible.
Okay.
That, it's in the typical for the Canton Road.
If, if this project was to come in, what would be the landscape buffer required on that parcel?
Uh, so, just, Connected City has its own land development code, and it has its own buffering requirements, whereas our, our regular code is an A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H buffer. Connected City is one, two, three, four, um, and I can't pinpoint off the top of my head what those are, just because, you know, bouncing back and forth between them. Um, but I think generally what the feel they're going for here is a more walkable street, as opposed to, you know, most of our basic land development code talks about, is separating uses, right? We, our regular code is suburban, it talks about, okay, between residential and commercial, we want a certain buffer to prevent these from really interacting with each other. Uh, this intent, again, is to bring the building closer to the frontage, uh, have it more walkable, so a ten-foot or fifteen-foot or, or a, an intense landscape buffer doesn't get us there. So I think the intent is to not necessarily have a buffer that you would normally expect in a suburban environment.
So, sounds like the correction is to...
To remove that from the binding.
The landscape buffer needs to be removed from the binding concept plan.
Sure.
Where does it say that?
It's, it's a real fine print, a real small print there to the left of the building, doesn't that say ten-foot landscape?
Says ten-foot building setback.
Was that what that says? Okay, I thought it said ten-foot landscape buffer. When you zoom in, it gets blurry, that's why, I, well, I mean, if, if that's the max, why isn't the building showing on that line? Can't be any further back than that, why isn't that building showing on that line on the binding concept plan?
Because it's, the binding concept plan is intended to be a general layout, I think, if, if they came in for actual engineering site plans, we'd ask them to bring that as close as possible.
Well, you, it...
That contradicts the first word of that sentence.
Yeah, so, so...
Binding concept plan.
So, and I had this fight with staff about the binding concept plan. Because in my mind, binding means binding, their mind is, means something slightly less than binding, but, um...
It's a doxymor, I believe.
But, I think planning commission could, if you want to approve this, and I don't know if you do or not, you could impose, you could, you could approve with the direction that the building be moved to match the setback, to, 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 to the limits of the setback line.
I'm fine with that, and I understand the intent, I just wanted to make sure we're creating conflicts, that's all. So, I'm okay with it, but, I mean, staff okay that the binding concept plan doesn't show what the conditions reflect?
As a, it's, it's a concept, right, and you're bound to the concept. There are thresholds that we can make, uh, adjustments to at the preliminary site plan stage to make sure that the final site plan, once it's been fully engineered, is true to the concept plan that's being demonstrated at the public hearings.
Kinda like the comp plan.
But, notwithstanding that, if planning commission wants to approve this with a requirement that that building be moved, you have that authority to make that request party a recommendation.
I don't care, I just feel like there's, I feel like there's varying definitions being thrown around for a binding concept plan and what it's to include.
Their, those terms are antonyms, so...
Okay, that's all I got.
That's the issue.
Johnny, next. I don't have any more questions. Matt?
Just, just one for the, for the engineer. You, you mentioned, you know, twenty-five-year, hundred-year storm, had done geotech, what assumptions did you make to size those ponds for this concept plan? Yeah, let's start now.
Is your engineer available?
Eric, are you still there?
He was on my backs.
Here, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
So the ponds...
Did you hear the question? Did you hear the question, Eric?
Yes, the question was, why the ponds were placed where they are placed. The ponds are located at the existing wetland locations. We feel it's best to follow...
Eric, stop, that wasn't the question, the question was, what assumptions did you make? I think you wanna repeat the question.
Yeah, the question was, what assumptions did you make to determine the overall size of those ponds?
The sizing of the ponds isn't final, it's a preliminary concept. Without having geotech, I can't finalize drainage.
Preliminary concept, why isn't it five acres, it's five point one seven, it seems like there was some math in there. Probably with the CAT programs.
We quantify the pond areas.
If it's just, if it's, that's just the area that was left, uh, that's what I'm wondering, is just what, how we got to some assumption of size of it's, where that came from?
The, the ponds were maximized, uh, to create, to, to provide the most amount of runoff storage. Um, they are not final. They were placed in their given locations, because that's where the wetland limits are, roughly. They're subject to change. There was no deep thought, there, there's no magical formula that I created to determine the pond sizes.
Okay. Does that create an issue with our binding site plan again?
Well, this goes back to the issue of...
Yeah, I mean, there's a, yeah, the, so there's, there's a condition that deals with the binding concept plan, I think it's condition seventy, which talks about the fact that staff can approve deviations from the binding concept plan, as long as the substantive intent and purpose is achieved, so, I think that's what staff is referring to, is that they can approve small deviations from that plan, based on final engineering. So, that's probably why they would argue that, you know, the building being ten-foot, they can fix that when site plans come in, or the size of the ponds, as long as this general layout is achieved.
Okay, you okay, Matt?
Yep.
Okay. Anything else from up here? Derek, Chris, Chris? Nothing further, is there a motion?
Just gave the gavel back, you wanna make one?
You didn't ask it too.
Let me just tell you where I'm at with it, and we'll talk, and maybe, maybe we'll make a motion. What I see is a special planning area referring to Connected City that got done on a piece-by-piece-by-piece basis, rather than a regionalized planning exercise, and in the overall scheme of things, I think the mark was missed. All that being said, I don't think you can punish the applicant for the sins of the past. And I see that a lot in government sometimes, too, and I think we need to be real careful. I know there's gonna be discussions this year about stormwater regulations, and I've watched this in Pinellas County, and if they're listening. When Pinellas County's ninety-nine percent developed, telling the last one percent of the undeveloped landowners that they need to triple the amount of stormwater retention on their project, isn't gonna solve the sins of the past. And so I don't think denying this project is gonna solve the problems, the, the overall large-scale planning problems of Connected City. And I don't know how you fix those, I have a question for David. I gave a little bit of thought before I came here about that. Connected City has its own land development code. Can that land development code be tweaked, changed, fixed, to come back and address things like district parks and trails? Is, is, is that doable, is that doable at this point in time, or is it too far gone?
So, a land development code can be amended, there's no question, you process land development code amendments all the time. The issue, however, is making them retroactive to projects that have already been approved. Now, if they only have a zoning approval...
Right, and that's what I'm talking about.
Um, and they haven't been, don't have a, if they have a site plan approval, it's probably too late at that point to be changing their regulations. Um, if they only have a zoning approval, yes, in theory, you could amend the regulations. Where you do have some issues, though, and we saw this when we did the car wash changes, is that what happens when you have an MPD that has something that's in it that is contrary to your new regulations, and then you get to reconcile that conflict, so, um... But, that aside, as a general rule, you can amend, you can make your land development regulations more stringent than maybe what the zoning originally permitted, if that makes sense.
Does that open up the county for lawsuits from those who have already been entitled?
That's a difficult question for me to answer, I mean, the, the Harris Act does, does have, does create a potential cause of action when you basically, you know, take away somebody's uses. But, there's, you know, I don't think that case law is, is developed enough for me to say definitively to you that, that it's gonna result in liability just because you changed the regulations. It, it's a, it's a case-by-case scenario, and I can't really answer that until I saw the actual regulation that we were changing has applied to a particular piece of property. But even if it did, the Harris Act has a mechanism where the property owner can submit a request to the county and say, what you've done in this new regulation is inordinately burdened by entitlements, and we can then, we have an opportunity to address it, fix it, give them a variance, give them something to address that potential impact. And if they don't like what we propose, then they can sue us. So there, the Harris Act is a process where we can try to address the situations you're talking about. So as a general rule, I don't, I don't think the county should not do new land development regulations out of fear of liability, where, where you have the, the biggest risk of a Harris Act claim is when you basically downzone somebody's property, in other words, you say, your property was entitled to thirty units, and we're now giving you one. Okay, that, that's probably the clearest case of a Harris Act diminution, but where you get into things like new parking regulations or new stormwater regulations, that's less, that's, that's...
Let me tell you where, where, what I'm thinking, where I'm going to go. In Connected City, this is a special planning area, and although we've developed a special Connected City land development code, maybe Connected City is where a form-based code would have made more sense. Here we are arguing about whether a building should be up on the street, whether a, a mixed use should be vertically integrated, in other words, what the form of development should look like, instead of our text-based land development code, which is more applicable to our run-of-the-mill suburban development, which this wasn't intended to be. My thinking, and I'm sure, well, I can safely say it, Mr. Two's left the building, so he won't attack me on the way out of the building, but...
He's waiting.
He'll just get me...
He'll just get me, that's me. Seems to me like, maybe there needs to be a moratorium in Connected City while we figure out how to fix the land development code to better achieve the ultimate goals of Connected City. All that being said, when it comes to this case, I find no reason to deny it just because the goals of Connected City have not been achieved. I don't think it's this applicant's fault that those goals haven't been achieved. They're, they're surrounded by other, much, much larger approved MPUDs. Which, I don't know whether it was the Planning Commission, the County Commission, the planning staff wasn't paying attention. Didn't achieve all of these objectives. But I don't think we're going to fix the problems of Connected City by denying this application. So, I will make the move, the motion to approve this application. And then when we're done, I'd like to make a second motion.
Can I assume the motion is with the prior amendments that we made to the conditions?
Yes, that would include all the prior amendments that we had during this discussion. And my second motion won't have anything to do with this. Can I have a second?
Let me ask a question about the conditions real quick. We, and I'll defer to you all who do more site development than I do. We changed condition fifty, that last sentence, we changed any floodplain stormwater compensation and/or wetland mitigation required can be offsite. Can we, can you do floodplain mitigation offsite?
Well, to be clear, the change we made was, is to say shall be located within the residential portion of the MPD or an offsite mitigation thing, so it's either, it's or.
So, I have seen instances where floodplain mitigation has been done offsite. However, the Water Management District is very particular about that issue in that the mitigation could happen offsite, but it needs to be in the same hydrologic watershed because the mitigation in another watershed isn't going to mitigate for fill in this watershed. That's a rare occurrence. Does it happen? Yes.
Could it be a combination of two?
I think what the intent of condition fifty is, is that the service-ready site area needs to be pad-ready. You need to be able to build it. And if that means they've got to nix ten townhomes out of their townhome development to make that stormwater pond to accommodate additional floodplain compensation, then that's what they need to do, and I'm satisfied with condition fifty.
Yeah, as long as it says both, that, that makes sense.
So, I think the motion, we added an or to that, but could it be an and/or? Could, could it be a combination to, to have some mitigation on-site as well as some credits added to the mitigation?
Do you want to change it to and/or, or? Wasn't the motion or?
I think the motion was or, yeah.
It's in the grammar whether, you wanted to say and/or, I don't think that's in, into the world. If you want to, I don't remember who made that motion, but if you want to remake the motion to say and/or an offsite mitigation area.
I will happily amend my motion.
Can we get a second for that amended motion?
Yes, I think I seconded it.
The clerk's having a hard time following what's going on.
No, no, that was, that was for the, the motion was to improve the project. This was earlier, we made the motion to amend that language.
There, he's going back-
What I'm saying, the motion that I put on the floor, I am willing to amend in what Mr. Potlott has suggested.
He's amending a prior motion he made previously.
Right, this is a sub-motion. So, we have a motion and a sub-motion second. Uh, on favor?
Aye.
Did we get a second?
Yeah, I seconded.
Okay, so to be clear, that was a motion to just amend condition fifty.
Yes, now back to your original motion.
To say and/or.
Let's get to the point here.
Okay, back to your-
Now, we have, let's go back to his original motion, which is to prove the project as amended previously.
Right, and then we were looking for the second, and I think Matt had a question. Matt, did you get the answer?
I did.
Okay, so are you seconding the motion, Matt?
No.
Do we have a second? I'll second the motion because I think we need to move on with this motion. We have to come to a, a way to solve this problem. And I think your next motion, if I can just assume that your next motion is going to have to be, have to deal with the, you know, amending that.
The issues.
The issues that we talked about. So, so we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion?
Yeah, I guess first, I mean, John, I completely agree. I mean, I, to, to put the burden on this property owner and this developer to fix prior sins is, is not fair. My problem with this one is, is I think there's a lot of things that are outlined in the land use that are not necessarily met with what's proposed here in the zoning. That, that's, that's my opposition, and that's why I'm, I'm, that's why I didn't second the motion in the first place, so.
Okay. Yeah, the discussion on the motion. Okay, so we have a motion, a second, no further discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, roll call.
Jamie Gerardi?
Nay.
Christopher Poole?
Aye.
John Booty?
Aye.
Matthew Muntz?
Nay.
Derek Montles?
Aye.
Chris Williams?
Aye.
Chairman Charles Craig?
Nay.
Uh, the motion carries four to three.
Okay. All right, your next motion, John?
I'd move to recommend to the Board of Commissioners that there be a moratorium imposed in Connected City for one year while we figure out how to implement land development regulations that better achieve the goals.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Can I just get clarity on the motion? Because I, is it-
The recommendation to-
Is it a moratorium on new rezonings in Connected City, or a complete moratorium?
No, I want to change the land development code, so that would be a moratorium on development in Connected City.
So, so that would include site plan approvals?
Site plan approvals.
Building permits?
Yes, sir.
Everything?
Yes. Probably fix the land development.
Let's have a, yeah, so-
So, really, we're recommending that the Board adopt a moratorium.
Right. Just in Connected City.
In Connected City, great.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Jamie Gerardi?
Nay.
Christopher Poole?
Aye.
John Booty?
Aye.
Matthew Muntz?
Aye.
Derek Montles?
Aye.
Chris Williams?
Aye.
Chairman Charles Craig?
Aye.
So, David Engel and Terry, you're going to have to figure out how to best convey that recommendation to the Board of Commissioners.
They're probably listening.
Well, I, I don't know if you're going to have to just do an agenda item to the Board, because I, I'm not sure it makes sense to tie it to this particular application because it sounds like the concern is beyond this particular application.
No, it would, and I need a little bit of clarity and definition as to what the moratorium constitutes. Is it future site plan submitted?
This, I, I just, that's the question I just asked. The mesh, the motion was a complete moratorium. It was new rezonings, new site plans, new building permits, any further development in Connected City.
But it wouldn't affect what was already permitted?
No, it would. That's why I asked the question.
What I'm trying to get at is that I think we need a year pause, since moratoriums are limited to a year, for somebody to go back and fix the land development code, have workshops, fix the land development code as it, as it affects Connected City. It has its own special land development code to address the issues. I think the public has legitimate concerns. We've got this whole issue of district parks and whether there was trails that were supposed to be there, and, you know, there needs to be some clarity.
No, I, I understand that, sir.
But I, I understand Mr. Engel's reservation, and I can explain it a little better. Okay, so by you applying it to everything, including building permits, that means that even poor Mrs. Smith, who happened to buy a lot in Marada, who was about to, to build her home, is not going to be able to get a building permit because of that moratorium. So, historically, the Board has not applied moratoriums to that late stage of development where you have sort of innocent third parties that are not the developer that are now being held up because of that moratorium.
Well, okay.
Well, I had an additional question, Mr. Holstein. So, is this for opted-in projects or projects that are opted out? For example, Pasco Town Center is in the Connected City employment area, they didn't opt in, and they just put in the problem-
See, Mr. Engel, therein lies the problem.
They put in a hundred million dollars.
We're going to have a special planning area, but you can maybe be in it, and you can maybe not be in it.
Wait a second, I, I think that's not the context of the question. The context of my question is, they already installed reliance on their approvals, a hundred million dollars worth of road infrastructure, and they're in process building a building. You're telling me that they should halt that, all that construction?
Well, that was a, that was a recommendation to the Board. They can choose to go with the recommendation, or they can choose not to go with the recommendation. And those are things that I'm sure all of the property owners in Connected City will be coming out there squawking about them at. But I also hear a lot of residents out here complaining that they got sold, they got sold a pretty picture, and they didn't get it. They're not getting a park. They're not getting these nice buildings. We got a big distribution center coming.
So, and I just wanted to clarify, this, this is your motion. Okay, so you could, and you all voted, I just wanted to make sure that Mr. Engel's on the same page about what the motion entails. So, the motion is a complete moratorium within the Connected City's special planning area for a period of time for us to develop new land development regulations. Is that, that's, that's what you moved?
My intent was that we don't process any site plan approvals, we don't do any more rezonings.
Okay, that's why I asked you the question, because there's a big difference between-
No, I am not trying to stop Mrs. Smith, who's already bought a lot in Marada. Marada's done, it's, it's a done deal.
Okay, so, probably need to remake your motion. You want a moratorium on new rezonings and site plan approvals within the Connected City planning area, until we've developed these land development regulations? Is that more accurate?
That would be a more accurate statement, yes.
Okay, let's, let's do that as a new motion.
So moved.
Okay.
I second it, I second it before, I'll second that.
Okay. Um, motion is made, any further discussion of the motion? Not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Posed, like sign?
Nay.
All right, motion carries.
That was Mr. Gerardi, it was-
Yeah, a quick question, the motion that was done previously, does that need to be rescinded, or is it kind of as it was?
Do we, do we need to revote to rescind that one?
Let's do a motion to resc, to rescind Mr. Booty's prior motion.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote.
Are you, are you good now?
Motion carries.
Yeah, yes, we rescinded the prior one, thank you. Okay, so, getting back to my original question, Mr. Engel or Mr. Petos, is this something you would just put on as like a separate agenda item to the Board?
Well, I'm going to discuss that with the county administrator first, as the path forward is how we're going to present it to the Board.
Well, what you all do with the recommendation is up to you and the county administrator, or you could say, we don't agree with it. But since they made a motion, I think you need to present it to the Board somehow.
No, no, I, I agree.
Okay.
Regardless of my feelings about it, I'm going to present it. So, once the clerk issues a, a record of this meeting, and has a precise language in that motion, I'm going to present it to the county administrator, and that's how I can convey it to the Board of Commissioners.
Okay.
Play in the tape.
Roll the dings.
Well, I think it should be probably some, like a regular discussion item for the Board, so they don't. But you put it however you and the county administrator decide to put it, as long as it gets to the Board somehow. Okay. I think we're done with that item, right?
Yeah.
Okay. You leave it. Okay. Okay, Liam, is there one more item?
We do have another item, and I believe it is P nine, which is a discussion on accessory dwelling units. I don't know if you want to take a five-minute recess, or continue.
Okay, yeah, let's take a five-minute recess, please.
Five-minute recess.
Five minute recess.
I just laugh. That fights for five minutes. First time it goes up in the air. That's not really fine. No, I mean, that's, that's...
Trust me, I have this on every day. Every day.
I think it does like... Yeah.
And so, well, you...
Go, uh, assess while I'm here. I also want to say that I have laughed over it for one hour. Uh, so, uh, here to answer any questions, uh, have you gentlemen have time to peruse, uh, the current draft ordinance? And if so, uh, any questions you'd like me to try and answer or any discussion you'd like to specifically cover. It's being removed. Yeah, so, uh, this version that you are seeing is based off of work we probably did a week ago. In that week, uh, there are some changes that you don't see here. But there is a condition there about architectural controls and all that kind of stuff. We're gonna remove that entirely from ADUs and the architectural controls in terms of the, uh, our, our current MPD. Yeah, uh, so, it potentially lead back, but, uh, you have a touch into it, but you, you still have it. But you really, in terms of peaceful, uh, in terms of dimensional standards, you can apply special exception for these dimensional standards to... So, let's say, you know, a cap is 100 square feet for the ADU, someone might be 1,200, you could apply the law of special exception there. A one, so one A through D are set as stone for just outright, you're allowed to do it. But if you want a D, you're not, if you want a special exception. Yes, you can get above 900 square feet by special exception.
So, now I can, now I can, so A through D, so you, in theory, could get a...
If the situation is appropriate as being, so by the plan of the mission, that makes sense. Uh, so, no, almost, uh, you just have to use, uh, tiny, tiny things that are on those. Uh, so, basically, I mean, building codes aren't, uh, special things, uh, that's why I like it too. But generally, the fixed foundation, just a four, you know.
So, that doesn't necessarily perform for, for some type of KMR.
Sure, yeah, and, and again, I think building code is generally not where I know most about, so...
So, maybe, maybe some consultation with the building official on how to deal with that.
Sure, so, uh, maybe the key part question there, I don't think we were planning on having any sort of transportation analysis tied to the ADU. So, that's probably something we weren't intending to look at. And then, uh, in terms of stormwater and that type of thing, um, you know, any, any structure over 500 square feet, when it's, uh, going through permitting already is required to have some sort of information showing if you're going through building permit. So, uh, if it were in an area that would impact some water damage areas over building permit, that could help with...
Now, I go in and I go into an, and let me use the, one example, it's a Timber Oaks basin of special concern. Or, since Mr. Poltorak is here, the Tank Lake one. So, we go in and we start building accessory dwelling units in the Tank Lake basin of special concern. And now I've created a bunch of stormwater runoff. 902.2K or whatever the section that requires the grading plan doesn't require somebody provide a stormwater management analysis and a retention pond and design to the 25 year, 24 hour storm. It makes them grade the site so that they don't create an adverse off-site, immediate off-site impact to their neighbor or something.
Sure.
And so, I, that was one of my concerns when we had the comp plan discussion last time about ADUs and especially with them not counting towards density. Because like I said, when, the reason that we, the reason that we limit density and we look at density in the areas because density has impacts which are associated with it, stormwater being one of them. And I'm fine with how we voted before, but I think David brings up a good point. I think there needs to be some evaluation of whether the infrastructure of an area is problematic to supporting ADUs. And I'm not suggesting that every ADU applicant should have to come in and do some sort of concurrency analysis. It should be that our county staff should identify areas where we have perhaps severely substandard infrastructure that isn't capable of supporting ADUs. Like for instance, we have a street where we have known low water pressure problems and a two inch water line. Maybe that's not the place we wanna go add ADUs. Whereas, any standard subdivision with eight inch water lines running up and down the streets that are capable of supplying fire hydrants, water's not a concern.
Sure, understood. And, uh...
Look, I can just add to it under, because your introductory clause does say, ADUs are not appropriate in every situation due to distance, height, and streets or limitations imposed by these standards. So, you're sort of recognizing that there could be areas where they're not appropriate.
Yes.
But then the substantive standards don't necessarily prohibit them in areas where they may not be appropriate.
So, I, I think that's just intended to provide clarity that, uh, when we say that, if you can follow these standards, you're generally okay. It's just for those people that can't follow the standards, we want them to know it's just this location isn't right because of these standards below.
And I'm looking at your standards and I, this is why ultimately the root of my question, which is, if somebody's adding an ADU on a known substandard flooded road, is staff okay allowing that?
So, and I will, I think, maybe something to help too, uh, something, uh, that a lot of people bring up when we kind of bring this idea forward to them, utilities is, is a great example. Um, you know, what's the difference between this and an addition to your home, right? We don't go in and look at every single situation where someone's adding another room to their home and because it's in the, uh, a, a certain sub-basin, we say you can't, as far as my, as far as I'm aware, that you can't do it. So, um, like utilities, when we said utilities, you know, is this gonna be an issue with you? They say this, it's another room on a house. We don't care if it's attached, detached above. It's just another room. Um, that's how a lot of people look at it. So, and I'm not saying no and we, I'm not saying we can't look into those things. But, um, I just, I, I worry about, uh, coming up with a regulation that would account for all of those potential situations if...
Your basic position is, your position is that if it's a 900 square foot addition of any kind, basically?
Sure, a barn, uh, an addition to your bedroom.
That's the equivalent of adding a couple rooms and you're not going to necessarily bring the infrastructure impact.
Sure, and that's why we're, again, one of the reasons to handle the density issue is we're, we're trying to limit the size of them to 900 square feet. Uh, I believe when the 900 number, uh, came up previously when that was developed, that was something fairly small. It's not the size, you're not gonna have your three bedroom home, you're not gonna have kids and as big of an impact on the...
Drive through Jasmine Lakes? You ever go through Jasmine Lakes?
Uh, I've, not, not recently.
You know what those houses are? They're 900 square feet.
Sure. And, uh...
People did raise families in those. And I get a kick out of this. I'm actually looking at the introductory statement in the intent and purpose. The missing middle housing type. Our problem with housing types is we don't have any entry level housing types, all right? It's not that we're missing the middle housing type.
Sure, I don't disagree.
900 square feet for an ADU is more than generous. And I can tell you that there are a lot of families who raise their entire families in 900 square feet or less.
Sure.
Yeah, this is really a policy, it's your metric. I'm not trying to weigh in one way or the other. I'm just asking you what your response is. If we get a neighbor saying, why did you allow an additional ADU on my substandard flooded road? I wanted to know what your response was, and your response is, it's equivalent of adding a bedroom, basically.
Sure.
Well, how big's a bedroom?
I'm sorry?
How big's a bedroom?
Um, I don't know. It's off the top of my head. I, I've seen different floor plans. I mean, depending on the floor.
10 by 15? 10 by 10? That's 100, 150 square feet. That's not 900 square feet.
Sure.
The reason the code wants a drainage plan at 500 square feet is because there is impacts. Right, Mr. Poehm?
Yeah, we're just trying to, um, of course, as, as we do, uh, balance opinions and preferences to find a good middle ground. Um, we've landed on 900. Uh, could that potentially go lower? Sure. Could it go higher? Absolutely. But currently staff's position is 900. Um, and you know, just based off of...
Don't get me wrong. I'm not opposed to it being 900 or 1,200 or 2,400. What, I, this goes back to the statements that I made during the initial, that the comp plan amendment portion of this. These things are not impactless. They do have impact.
They do.
And there has to be some way of evaluating whether or not their impact is negligible or require some sort of mitigative strategy, strategy.
Sure.
You just start doing this, you know, I know all the, I don't know if there's anybody, enough people in Timber Oaks that are here listening to me. But Timber Oaks basin of special concern was never a concern when I was growing up. You know when it became a concern? It became a concern when everybody in Timber Oaks decided to take their 900 square foot retirement house, add another bedroom, add a swimming pool, widen the driveway to three cars. add another bedroom, add a swimming pool, widen the driveway to three cars wide. I don't want any green grass to mow around my retirement home, so now I'm going to put asphalt down and white rock on top of it, just like they did in all the ones in Holiday, and then we wonder where all the stormwater came from. They continue to do it to themselves.
Sure.
And this is a, this is a recipe to add to that, I'm not saying this is a disaster, and I will tell you, I support ADUs, but I think there has to be some method of evaluating whether or not they have some impact on the infrastructure. And if all of a sudden, everybody in the neighborhood decides to have an ADU, what am I doing with double the amount of cars in the neighborhood? We've already got people complaining about traffic problems.
There may be a solution, I mean, it depends on what staff wants to do, but I mean, in theory, you could give some delegated authority to the county administrators that need to say that in areas with known infrastructure deficiencies, that they have the authority to require a special exception for the approval of the ADU. I mean, you kind of do this a little bit with, I've seen it done with MPUDs and substantial, non-substantial divisions to amendments to MPUDs. There's a catchall at the end of the MPUD criteria for what is a substantial amendment that says that if the county administrator doesn't need, determines it's substantial, it's substantial. There's some delegated authority to say, hey, this is a problem, I want to get this to go to the board. And so I think you in theory could do something similar with this and say, give the county administrators some delegated authority that if there's a known infrastructure deficiency, that they have the authority to say that even an ADU under 900 square feet requires a special exception to be approved.
Wouldn't we need criteria to divine, define what is substandard, like in this instance, wouldn't we need to know what that is? Because I might have a different opinion.
I think that would be helpful, I mean, you could say known.
I think it would be helpful is maybe if you consult with the other departments, Public Works, Utilities, and get some input from them as to where they have known issues. Now perhaps they have plans to correct issues, but if there are areas where there is, like I said, constant low water pressure problems or sewage pumping stations that are continuously a problem.
Sure.
For them, that maybe, maybe it's not good to flood that area with ADUs until those things can be corrected.
Okay, yeah, we can, and just so you know, we have talked to quite a few departments, haven't asked that specific question. But we can definitely circle back and do that.
To answer your question, yes, I don't have a problem if you want to itemize the potential infrastructure deficiencies such as, you know, water pressure, storm, you know, flooding.
Firefighting, water supply?
Water supply, I mean, gee, I, we kind of all know what those things are because, I guess it's those are the same kinds of things that have caused planning commissions to deny rezoning to the past.
Sure.
Timber Oaks is a perfect example because we denied the rezoning because of the, those roads were flooded. So. I don't, where I disagree slightly with Mr. Moody is I'm moving up to identify every geographic area of the county where there's known deficiencies. But I think if you give the county administrators a designated authority to say, this one's a problem because of the infrastructure, I think it needs to go through the special exception process. That probably addresses at least a large part of the concern.
I like your thinking, David, the question I have is more one of practice. So they come down, I assume if someone wants to build an ADU, they go down and they fill out a building permit application.
That's correct.
So how does the guy that takes in the application at the building department counter know whether or not there was a known infrastructure problem?
Well, I mean.
Does that, do you have to create some other review process or?
Do you think all building departments get reviewed by zoning, right?
Uh, there is a team in the building department that looks at zoning issues, yes. So yes.
So it's not the zoning department that reviews it, it's the building department?
Yeah, there are people embedded in the building department that specialize in looking at setbacks and all that kind of stuff. And if there's something that they can't handle, they'll reach out to the zoning team with Planning PDEG to help assist.
Well, is there a way, Patrick, I mean, because we have drainage basins of special concern, we have criteria for when a road is substandard, we have criteria in our code about certain problematic areas of the county or problematic infrastructure deficiencies.
Sure.
Is there a way to tie it to, to those sort of objective standards about a substandard road or, or you know, drainage basis of special concern or. I've seen other code references to known flooded flooding areas too.
We can look into that to see if that is something that we can add to this code to solve that issue. We can definitely look into it.
Those are, those are all things you can identify upfront too.
Right, I'm just trying to think, is there something that we could point to that would be easier for a zoning technician to say, hey, here, this one's mapped, this one's in a map, drainage basis of special concern. I need to go see whether this one needs a special exception or, I need to ask Terry.
Almost like another layer on the mapper or something like that, is there, is there, and taking something.
Yeah, I think it's, we would need to identify what those criteria are that make something appropriate for an ADU, ADU location in that area or not. Again, we could do that, but you know, just to paint a bigger picture too, because again, hearing the last planning commission, there were concerns about we're going to be seeing a whole lot of ADUs in the county pop up. We actually reached out to our neighbors that actually have ADUs on the books and asked them numbers, you know, what are you, what are you looking at? So Pinellas County in the last year, roughly 100, Hillsborough between 150 and 200.
Countywide?
Countywide, Polk, I think it was 50, Sumter.
How long have they been on, those rules been on the books?
Um, I don't know for each one, obviously they've all adopted their ordinances at different times, but.
Are these per year or numbers in them or total?
Per year.
Per year.
I'd argue the areas where the ADUs will pop up in Pasco would be areas that might have the issues that we're, we're talking about.
What I would tell you is this, that's the ones who did it legally.
Sure.
Because I could tell you right now, and you drive, you want to drive in my neighborhood? There's a lot of ADUs out there that may not, may or may not fit the definition of this code, and there's a lot of ones that are unpermitted.
Well, you were, and you raised a very.
And that's not endemic just to my neighborhood, I could tell you, it's all over the place.
Yeah, you raised a very good point, that's something that the building department deals with on a daily basis is, you know, the definition of what a dwelling unit is has, is cut so thinly that basically as long as you don't have a certain electrical service and you don't have cabinets, then you're not an ADU, but people always go in and add them anyways and after the fact, so.
At least this gives our ADUs path to citizenship, so that's.
That's a good way to look at it, for sure.
I don't think it's that hard to figure out when somebody has a tent shed and they put in a window banger, air conditioner, and there's lights on and you can see the pipes coming out the back headed to the septic tank, that that's an ADU.
Sure.
But that goes back to what I was going to mention, that's what I was going to mention before too was, is there, you know, I understand there's our neighbors adjacent to us that have implemented these recently. Do we have any data, you know, more of an aggregate level from other municipalities, maybe not even in Florida, that have had these rules on the books for a lot longer and just to see what kind of impact? Because I think all the concerns around here about impacts to infrastructure, if these become widespread. So the question would be how widespread, and historically speaking, in these counties that approve these, how widespread did they truly become before it hit saturation level? I don't know if you know that answer, but, but that might be something to look at.
I don't have specific numbers off the top of my head, but from what I gather, it's negligible, right? If it were such a concern in all of these counties, they would be updating their ordinances to say, oh, we got a problem, we got to change this and get rid of this.
Okay, so excellent.
On the whole, it's negligible, it might be a large impact on the micro level, but on the macro level, you're saying it's negligible. Based on.
I, I mean, both, I mean, I, again, there's a barrier entry of, of cost, ADUs aren't cheap to do. Going through the permitting process costs money to do, and then having the appropriate sized land to do it. You know, we, we just don't foresee thousands of ADUs being applied for.
So then how are we meeting your goals and objectives of providing additional housing and providing the missing middle and all of this other good?
Every, every drop in the bucket is another layer added, so this is one way to get to where we need. Are there other policies that we absolutely want to adopt to increase housing stock? Absolutely, this is just one of them.
If it's only anticipated to be a small number initially?
Sure.
Then why don't we test the temperature of the water first? And why don't we just do them all by special exception so that we can get an, get an, rather conditional use? So that we can figure out, so that we can hear these things, figure out where neighbors have objections, where neighbors don't have objections, and where these things become problems. If we're only expecting a few a year, well then that's just a few more special exception cases we hear. And then we're not fully committed to something and have to go back, just like we talked about with Connected City, now to try to fix something that's broken.
That may increase the barrier of entry to even doing this in the first place, and we go back to the people that are doing them unpermitted, which they're doing already.
I don't think this is going to stop them from doing this unpermitted.
You also just scared Liam to death too by just saying that, just so you know.
I mean, look, I, I was involved in creating some of our first regulations and I almost hate saying this, but maybe it's not the end of the world if you have another ADU on a substandard road. I mean, to me, the real issue I'm worried about is flooded. I mean, because.
Permeable.
Because if somebody puts an ADU in a flood, in a flood prone area, that's more people we're going to rescue, it's more people that we may have to buy out, if we have to buy out the lot because it's flooded, or the FEMA has to come in, I mean.
Well, David, is there a provision against them putting a pool?
ADU?
No, a pool in a flood prone area, is there a provision against that? Because maybe, maybe the trigger's the size.
And also to clarify too, they have to meet Florida building code, so if it theoretically had to be elevated, it has to be elevated.
Understand, but it's just. I don't think you're understanding the point that every time, every time I add another impervious surface, I'm adding more runoff. I'm adding more stormwater that has to go somewhere, and if I'm in a bowl, it doesn't go anywhere.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, we, I recall that we have mapped known flooded areas in our county. What is wrong with saying if they're in one of those mapped known flooded areas, that it requires a special exception?
Nothing.
Correct, I agree.
We can do that. We can establish, I'm going to use the word loosely, like overlays such as that, that can control where ADUs can occur. You can also control the type of ADU that takes place based on where they are. So for example, if stormwater drainages are concerned, perhaps only ADUs that fit on existing, no, no adding new impervious service area, they're only on the existing, let's say we've got the public garage.
Good point.
They don't expand the footprint.
That, that's a great point.
Things like that too. So like in, if the drainage of special concern example that we're talking about here is initiative of the, of the situation, you could say only ADUs that have, that sit on the existing footprint can occur here. Now if we have other concerns such as, you know, flooding, flood rescue situations, maybe there's something more that we can research and develop.
Yeah, Terry, I'm not suggesting you need to come up with every special exception condition in the code. All I'm saying is, and I think that Mr. Moody's saying too, is there should be some trigger where that particular ADU goes through a process, that where we can look at what conditions do we need to impose on it to make sure it's not exacerbating the flooding in that area. So if we've got mapped areas of known drainage basis of special current or known flooded areas, I'm pretty sure I've seen these maps before. Maybe we just say, if you're on one of those maps, notwithstanding all this, if you're on one of those maps, you need a special exception approval for ADU.
I would think one of them would be density, right? That's the most obvious, that, you know, the more, the more dense, then the more impact an ADU would have per acre.
It's counterintuitive. I understand the drainage utility issues, those are valid issues. The question on density however, is kind of counterintuitive. Usually the higher, the more densities you increase, the more bang you get for your infrastructure dollars. Meaning you have less infrastructure on the ground serving more people. So it's an inverted relationship with regard to density. What we're talking about here is low density suburban environments that are going to add an ADU. So much of the literature, such as from the AARP for example, they'll refer to that as being more efficient use of the suburban infrastructure that's already in place. Because an ADU up to a certain dwelling or ADU dwelling unit size actually has less impact on the infrastructure than say, brand new house on a 50 by 120 foot lot. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that we could take into account, but I'm not sure that density is.
I was just thinking, you know, if you have five acre lots, you have an 8, a 900 square foot ADU, that's going, you know, for every, let's say 20% of those five acre lots have an ADU, that's a lot different than 20% of the lots of quarter acre lots that are having ADU in terms of stormwater and things like that. Infrastructure maybe it might make sense.
Yeah, and I think that there could be utility provision that you have to get utility approval.
Stormwater management is infrastructure, okay?
Right.
What I would tell you Terry is, just speaking from general civil engineering practice, when I go into a neighborhood, a modern neighborhood, not one that was built in this, not one that was built in Pasco County in the 60s or early 70s, the water lines are sized for the fire flow, okay? The amount we drink off the water line is really irrelevant, it's the amount of, those water lines are sized to provide the flow needed for the fire hydrants. So there's very little impact to potable water. There are some older neighborhoods that I can think of in Holiday and Hudson that have very small lines without fire protection where that could potentially be a problem. Gravity sewer systems, probably adding an ADU is not much of a problem. Pump stations, it can be a problem. A pump station is designed for a certain number of units to discharge to it, and it is not designed with additional volume inside that station to handle additional flows. So if we have, if you take an older neighborhood, oh, let's say Embassy Hills or Regency Park, and I start putting a bunch of ADUs in there, I could very quickly overwhelm sewage pump, undersized sewage pumping stations that were never designed to accommodate that. Adding additional stormwater runoff in an area where we have open drainage systems in the big scheme of things probably doesn't do much, but in the smaller scale does. For instance, when you see that grate in the parking lot or that opening in the curb that lets the stormwater flow in, there's only so much capacity that that opening has, I start adding a bunch more, and that's what a lot of people saw during Milton. There's a lot of people that weren't in flood zones that flooded, basically because your storm sewers, the storm sewer inlets do not have the capacity to take in that much water that fast, so that backs up. So I think there is some concern over the, the stormwater, but I'm with David, maybe in just identifying the more problem neighborhoods, get with utilities, get with Public Works and stormwater to identify the problem areas and make them special exceptions there. I don't want to make a, I don't want to make Mrs. Jones go through a concurrency analysis to build an ADU by any means, I mean.
So maybe between now and the time this gets to the body commission for real, you can just have a conversation with utilities, stormwater, Public Works and say, okay, what are the areas of the county that you, they're just so problematic, you don't even want to, you don't want to add any additional residential units to it? And see if they can come up with some description of what that is. And then you just say, in your code, if you're in one of those areas, the sewer flows, water flows or, you know, known flooded areas, that you need a special exception to get ADU approval.
And I would ask that that. And I would ask that that discussion not only include public works and utilities, but speak with the sheriff's department as well. As well as fire.
And one more question to that point. So in your analysis of looking at other ADUs, traditionally this was for extended family. I, I guess you've seen most of these used for extended family. In other words, is there, um, has there been any significant impact to schools? Extra, extra children being used.
Probably address that a little bit. Um, we had this conversation, did the school impact pay up to? And I think if they're around that nine hundred square foot level, they're, they have an impact, there's no question. But we're, the code says we're gonna assess them the multifamily rate, which that should address their impact.
I think it says, did it say the multifamily or the single family? I thought it said single.
If it's nine hundred or under, it's gonna be multifamily.
Let me ask this.
So on, um, two E.
Okay, what does it say?
Two E?
Says at a reduced rate.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, not two E.
Three E.
Three E. Three E.
Can you put up three E because I don't have that.
ADUs in a square foot, I should assess the multifamily school impact fees at a reduced rate.
The reduced rate for school impact fees is the multifamily rate.
Oh, is that what that means?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, we could probably write that in just to make it clear, but it's.
Yeah, I'd like to make it a little clearer.
The difference is that mobility has a special rate for ADUs.
Oh, okay.
For schools, when it came through, I do probably remember this discussion Chris, but we, we, we assessed it the multifamily rate.
And that's fine.
So yes, it has an impact, it's just to Terry's point, it's even lower impact than we would perceive of in the home. So the assessing it to multifamily rate basically addresses the impact.
And, and Derek, I asked the same question because I mean, obviously if an NMBUD, all of a sudden every one of those houses started doing ADUs, it'd be a huge concern, but assuming that, um, that's something we need to keep an eye on. But assuming that they don't generate lots of those, then we'd be okay, but if, again.
Well, that's why I wonder what the actual impact is, because I, I figured if you look at empirical data of, of other municipalities that have these ADUs, and I would assume most of the ADUs are being used for extended family, that it's not for kids.
Right, right.
Right? So there, I'm sure there's some, but it's a lesser impact than it would be of, of even multifamily is my guess. But I didn't know if there was that data that was out there.
I don't know that they have this, when we discussed this for schools and we talked to Carson, I don't know that he has data specific to ADUs. But it may be that the ADU impact is even lesser than in a apartment.
That's what I, that's what I.
But I, I did promise we don't have the data, so the closest rate we could assign it was multifamily.
Right, which is fair.
Patrick, let me ask this, this is a kind of complicated question. Somebody lives in Beacon Woods and they come to the building department and say, I wanna close in my garage and put in a kitchen and a bathroom so that my mother-in-law can live in there. And it's against the deed restrictions in the neighborhood.
Sure.
Does the, maybe David question.
Which one takes precedence?
Uh, well.
We have language.
Clearly I understand deed restrictions are a civil matter, but I could see where all of a sudden we could start clogging up a bunch of courts if the building department isn't on its toes to say, hey, isn't that a deed restricted neighborhood? You need to come back here with a letter from your HOA or something like that.
I mean, we generally do not enforce private deed restrictions. I, I don't know whether the building department is asking for any proof of approval from whatever HOA would have to approve it. Do you know Patrick, whether we do this?
I, I, I don't know, but I pro- I doubt they are.
I mean, it's interesting, they're, they're tasked with enforcing our land development regulations in the Florida building code. That's a big job for them as it is. I mean, they, it's, it's gonna be difficult for them to then say, oh, and we're gonna enforce some private deed restrictions that.
Yeah, and I, and I agree with you. I don't think the county should be in the business that's a civil matter. And I've heard Jeff say it before, that, you know, those are civil matters and that's not our issue as the county. But I think if all of this gets approved, there needs to be very good communication with the public that just because our zoning code may allow for an ADU, that doesn't mean you're off the hook with your HOA.
Sure. Um, and I can hear Elizabeth Blair in the back of my head right now saying, look at this line. Um, but, uh, we actually have that included in the, in the text, um, in the last sentence of B. We say, in addition, individual restrictive covenants may prohibit ADUs. So we have it in the language already.
That's your secret version?
Is it not in yours? Oh, okay, yeah, so.
Where is that?
That, that's the version he sent me. There's a version they've been working on in the last.
B, yeah, so when I had this uploaded, I think before I went to ODT and got some additional good feedback. Um, so yeah, there, there is a, oh wait, yeah, it's there, right there. Um, in addition, individual restrictive covenants may prohibit ADUs. So in, in that one, yes, it's still there.
End of, end of B.
Yeah.
So we've warned people that it could.
We've warned them.
Do we need a definition for ADUs somewhere? Because like this, is it two B, when a garage is converted to an ADU? Garage or study room, I mean, what makes it an ADU?
Uh, yeah, and that's probably my fault for not including that, that we have a, an appendix definition. Um, I just didn't include it in this document.
So I mean, I can tell you from, we get lots of calls, there's lots of people that get themselves in trouble. If you go down to the building department and you have a single family home, the minute you wanna add another stove, another, another way to cook in there, other than a microwave oven somewhere, but you wanna add a place for an appliance like a stove or a range, that's their, or all of a sudden I wanna add a bunch of two hundred and twenty volt outlets inside my garage, then that's their cue to figure out, hey, wait a minute, look at them, let's see if they're trying to close in the garage and make an ornament out of it.
Sure.
That's usually the dead giveaways.
Yep.
Patrick, along those lines, I got a couple of different questions, okay? So obviously my mind's going in the wrong direction here, but ADUs, I think like an ADU is like somebody has a garage and they wanna build out upstairs.
Sure.
Okay, now they probably run across issues there. If they're gonna do that for detached garage, build out upstairs, they probably run into problems with a nine hundred square feet. But the way this is written in, in two B, when a garage is converted to an ADU, what, how, what's the county's position? How are they gonna look at that if somebody builds out upstairs above the garage? Clearly you don't wanna clo- take out the garage door.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I, I think it's just the unit itself. I, I think.
The upstairs only?
Upstairs only nine hundred, yeah, it's not the entire structure. The garage is still being used as a garage, it's garage. We wouldn't expect them to take that garage door off unless it was being used as a living quarter.
As the living quarter. And then I guess along those same lines in the two E, wh- what is an example of when an ADU is located within a single family dwelling? Is that just if somebody has a separate door going into like a garage, if they take the garage door?
Yep.
Okay.
So I wasn't here.
There'll be a bunch of people that get a surprise when they have to turn that partition wall into a firewall and then run it all the way to the roof. And it's not as, it's not as simple as the zoning code may be.
I wasn't here last time, but I know I met with Denise and I don't know if you were involved in that many, but, um, so what are the thoughts on, okay, I'm living next door to somebody, now they're gonna build in their backyard, they're gonna build an ADU and now that kinda impacts my view?
Sure.
I mean, how do we?
Yeah, so we are, um, some places make exceptions for setbacks. So some places for ADUs, let's say you have your principal building setbacks and let's say from the side it's twenty feet or something like that. Some municipalities and local governments will say for an ADU, you know what, we'll let you go a little bit closer to that property line. Um, we are not planning on doing that. Uh, our setbacks for ADUs are going to be the setback as the primary, whatever. I mean, if your neighbor is coming in with the assumption that I'm not gonna see a home within twenty feet of me, we wanna hold true to that. So we are using the primary setbacks to account for ADUs as well.
So they, they do have to use the principal structure setback, not the accessory structure setback?
Correct, yes, not.
Okay, so here's a question. So I have a single family detached home and I decide I wanna build a detached garage. That's an accessory structure. And I build it five feet from my property line as allowed by the supplemental regs in the zoning code.
Yep.
Can I then turn that into an ADU?
So Liam, thank you very much for that support. Um, so that setback provision is within the section that we allow for special exception. So if you wanted to have a lesser side setback, like if you wanted to take your current garage, that's within five feet, and you wanna put an ADU on top of it, you will come in for a special exception and at the planning commission's discretion could theoretically approve it. Um, but if they don't come in for a special exception, no.
So at least you would get notice, Chris. And you'll get to come down here and vote on this. And it affects the school system.
Chris, the other thing I would say is that keep in mind that somebody could just expand their house.
Yes.
As long as they're in setbacks and, and the height and everything else, there's not much, that's allowed today.
Yeah, so that's, that's basically the answer. They could have built their house and been in that.
Right.
Right, been in that space already. Yes, gotcha, understood. I know.
Can we ask questions?
That's up to the chair. This is not, this is not an action item.
Yeah, we, we can. I, I think, I'm timing, I think Patrick said he has seven minutes left on his battery.
No, 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 no.
I'm just kidding, Nancy. Yeah, come up to the podium though, so we can get it. We'll take pull the comment, that's fine. Just keep it to three minutes, please, if you can.
I stepped in on a couple minutes, like some of this I think you already touched on. Um, I, Michael Pultorek, come on record, I did swear it. Just quick couple of things. I've been investing in real estate for probably twenty-five years now. I don't have the engineering background you guys do with specs on it, but there was a couple of things that I just wanted to mention. Maybe it works into your discussion, maybe it doesn't. First off, um, I think a lot of this comes down to intent instead of specific application when we're talking about a large, uh, seems like s- uh, single-minded document like this. Um, to Mr. Moody's point, a twenty by fifteen master bedroom, a ten by ten kitchen and a ten by nine bath is four hundred and ninety square feet. If it really is for a family member, I'm not sure how much bigger that needs to be. Just wanted to throw that out there. So it seems like a lot of this is proactive versus reactive. We're being reactive to current issues in the county, so we're trying to be proactive. But we're possibly, maybe, being a little bit too reactive in the situation. Potentially, I see three different style ADUs being put up here in one, one wave here. But maybe we need to look at garage ADUs, additions to homes and detached as separate categories. And the reason I say that is, would a freestanding ADU potentially benefit from having a minimum lot size? The, if it was freestanding, should it be allowed to be placed in a current flood zone, even if it's AE or otherwise? Should a density cap, I didn't see if there was a cap on the number of ADUs, but is there a density cap on the ADUs per parcel? Specifically parcel size to prevent somebody with five or ten acres from putting ten ADUs on their property? Potentially a registration process so that we can track known impact, utilities, storm water, schools, so that we can still monitor for the impact to the area. Potentially, there's a way, you'd know better than I, but what if it was an ADU based CO? What I mean by that is, maybe these could be attached to homesteaded properties only to prevent the investors from turning them into three or four rental units. So if it was like an ADU CO on the unit, if you move and sell the property, the next person could use it as an office space. But if they want somebody to live in it full-time, it would have to be homesteaded to them and that keeps the property owner there in tracking use of the property. Revenue basis is an item that does concern me. And maybe a public workshop to hear from interested parties that wanna do this in the future can provide some examples of how they would apply it before a single document gets put into place over all of those different projects. Thank you.
Brings up a good point and I, you know, I kinda glossed over this. I think there was a, some language in here that if you subdivided it, then the ADU would then become a principal structure.
Yeah, uh, it's, uh, and I'm sorry, I didn't get all, I was trying to write down, as fast as I could, um, I didn't get all of them. So if there's something I didn't address, let me know. Um, so yeah, there's language in there that basically is that, you know, what oftentimes will, I would assume is going to happen. Someone's gonna have their primary structure and then they're gonna build an ADU and then fifteen years down the road, they're gonna wanna sell that ADU. We're just putting language in there that says you need to follow the subdivision process if you're going to do that. So that's what that language is.
What stops me from condominiumizing it?
Why, I don't know, but we don't regulate condos currently anyways, I think.
And there's actually, there's actually case law that says that even if they condo, they still have to meet our land development regulations. They can't create a, a lot that would violate our zoning.
Well, a condo's not a lot. You own your, you own your three dimensional space. That's, that's townhouses. Townhouses are fee simple where we own the land under the lot. They may have common walls, but in a condominium, it's common ownership of the building. It's one ownership of the building, but you have ownership rights to your interior space that's different. And that's, but it's essentially the same thing.
What's this, oh, I mean, what, so what's the issue? They wouldn't be permitted another ADU just because they condo.
Is a backdoor way to subdivide and sell property. I see Denise back there. And what's, I think you should have language in there that you can't go turn these things into housing co-ops or condominiums either.
Okay, we can look into that. Okay, um, some of the other ones I, I, I sort of picked up. I think, um, one was, you know, what stops someone from adding multiple ADUs to the site? We have language in here that you can only have one ADU per parcel. In terms of tracking ADUs, uh, the, when we were going over this with the building department, um, they're planning on creating a new record type for ADUs to help track accessory dwelling units. So right now, the record type to submit a new home is called RESNEW. Um, they're gonna probably create a new record type for ADUs to help better track ADUs, which will help out, um, Mr. Williams there, um, trying to figure out how much of an impact this is having on the school board. So I think that's what the building department's plan is there. I know there are other questions, I'm sorry if I, I missed them. Um, if anyone remembers them, I can try and answer them, but.
Well, I do wanna be clear, because a couple of times folks have made comments today that this is for family members. And there's nothing in this code that restricts it to being for family members and that is very problematic to have to regulate.
Well, but it does say that if you wanna use them for vacation rentals, that you do need to go through the conditional use process.
Yeah, that's, that's different, but if somebody wants to rent it to their friend versus their family member, we are not going to regulate that.
I don't know how you would.
Well, I agree with you. I'm just saying that I've, I've heard that statement a couple of times that this, the intent of this is for your mother-in-law or your sister, but regulating whether some, it's your sister using it or your sister's best friend is not easy to regulate. And so it's not, there's nothing in these regulations that requires it to.
Well, but one of the things he brought up was doing, you had to have homestead on the property in order to limit an investor from having multiple rentals on one property.
Uh, on one property or multiple properties?
On one property.
Because we're only gonna have one ADU.
Investor goes out and buys one house.
Investor buys one house.
And adds an ADU and then he rents out the house and he rents out the ADU.
You own ten houses, you can effectively have twenty units, just like that.
Yeah.
That's a good question. That's a good question for Mr. Wells. If you have an ADU, do you get to claim homestead over the ADU?
I wouldn't know the answer to that.
Yeah, I mean, all these what-if scenarios. I mean, keep in mind, everybody, I mean, obviously this is information.
I can see where all of a sudden that could be a problem for him.
Sure. Yeah, there, there, there are tons of different variations and restrictions that are added to ADUs. Different communities have different things that they're concerned about. Um, is this theoretically something that could be added to ours? Sure. But right now, our current stance was definitely more, less restrictive in terms of not necessarily monitoring who is residing in that ADU or, or anything like that, with the exception of the vacation rental. That's just currently what we're at.
Remember, this is a land development code. We're not trying to regulate how something is taxed in our land development code, so. Mr. Wells alerts us that this is a. Mr. Wells alerts us that this is a problem, we can see if there's something he wants to change.
It'll be his problem, it won't be ours.
But as a general rule, if they're not homesteaded, they're going to be paying us more taxes.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure that's the end of the world.
Used to live on a lot that had what amounted to an accessory dwelling unit, and they figured it out.
Yeah.
And they didn't homestead the whole thing. It was a portion.
Denise Hernandez, code compliance, or, yeah, code compliance department. So I just wanted to mention that we do have a scheduled meeting to speak to someone at the property appraiser's office to discuss some of these items, because we do want to make sure that they are putting that on their tax rolls and everything else. So, so that is something that is going to happen shortly.
Thank you, Denise. Glad you're here. Nancy, did you want to come up too?
Nancy Hayeswood, 340119, nice place, state city. So I was looking at A, and I was wondering, encourage infill development, is that open space? That worries me. And of course, I'm thinking about how would this affect the rural protected area and how it would be used out there? I know in Tampa, I saw where they did these as a little subdivision, and I was wondering about that too. So anyways, those are just a couple of my thoughts. Thank you.
Okay, just to answer the last question, tiny subdivisions, this, ADUs couldn't be tiny subdivisions. I think you're probably thinking about like a tiny home community or something like that. This would just be an accessory structure to a single-family home lot. And again, I forgot, well, the first question again was?
Infill development.
Infill.
Infill development, open space.
Sure, yeah, it, not necess, well, I mean, I guess theoretically you are filling in open space, not necessarily if you're on top of an existing garage, but yes, some parts of the county, trying to get additional density where we need it, that type of thing. So, like I said, I think this goes back to judging from other local governments. We don't expect to see an overwhelming amount of these, so we think the impact is going to be relative, very, very minimal, probably not noticeable. To Mr. Moody's point, people are basically already doing this already, they're just not including a 200 amp electrical unit, and they're using a microwave instead, you know, so, you know, yet.
And they're not paying us the impact fee.
And they're not paying us the impact fees.
You're the mayor for it.
So, yeah.
Patrick, do you have an idea, or is there a timeline for this to come back to the planning commission for approval?
I am going to be taking it to a horizontal roundtable whenever the next, I think that's next week.
Yes.
And horizontal is my last step, and then I am currently working on creating the agenda to officially get this on the planning commission agenda. So I am trying to move as fast as I can. Like you said, we'll have those other conversations with some of those other departments, maybe add to the special exception. There'll maybe some tweaks along the way, but I envision what you see is not changing drastically. So, soon.
So, just one request. One, I appreciate you acknowledging that there could be restrictive covenants over a neighborhood that prevent ADUs. The other thing, I've been following the Facebook discussion on ADUs. There are a lot of people who are of the impression, I'm not saying it's the right impression, but mistaken impression, that allowing ADUs means that they're going to be able to park an RV in their yard and rent that out too, or a travel trailer.
Mm-hmm.
That's not the way I read the ordinance. I don't believe that's the intent of this ordinance.
Fixed foundation, so, but yes, we'll...
So if you'll work on that language to make sure that that's very clear, that you can't do that.
Right.
And, you know, the building official may, needs to make it clear, you know, camping trailers are for temporary camping, they're not meant to be living units.
Sure.
That's why we have a building code.
All right, thanks. Does anybody else, anybody have anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, sir, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
you to keep them healthy. Excess fertilizer, grass clippings, trash, oils, and pet waste wash into gutters and storm drains when it rains. Stormwater carries these pollutants directly into our lakes and rivers, creating an unhealthy environment for fish, waterfowl, and other aquatic animals. Storm drains are meant for clean rainwater. Most other discharges are illegal.